Congratulations. Stand, I'm gonna say a couple of kind words about you. Okay, so Becky is from WPS. She has two students, a first grader and a fifth grader. She was at Aloha Day today and she did a great job helping with that. She does Moving Mondays and Bingo Nights. She's always available to help with a smile. She's friendly, she's reliable, and you're a wonderful parent in our school system and we thank you very much. So, thank you very much. Okay, now off the top. Did it. Good? Okay, congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Our next, we're not going in any order, we'll do Burnham. Come on up Bridgette. Bridgette McKenney. Bridgette and I are both Queens girls, am I right? Yes! New York rocks! So, Bridgette is currently the Vice President of the PTO, but if you know anything about PTOs, if you are the Vice President, then you become the President. So, next year she'll be the President. She's always very helpful, she always has a smile on her face, she's been involved in every activity at Burnham School. She's very passionate about Bridgewater and the children in the community and she's wonderful to work with. So, congratulations.
Thank you.
Next, just so you know, our Booth Free parent Susan Derosia could not make it. She has school this evening, but she does a fabulous job at Booth Free and we thank her and we will send her, it's an apple, nice little, maybe I should show you. It's a volunteer apple, it says Volunteer Extraordinaire and we'll send that home, Mrs. Kalella. And we'll try to do this every year. So, a nice apple. Right? Nice! Okay. So, our next person is from the middle school and that is Tamzin Marquesi. Come on up. Just me! This guy here from Manhattan. Now, all of our volunteers are probably running from this activity to that, so stand your hole, I have to say nice words about you. Okay, so she's been involved in the middle school PTO for several years. She served as President. Each year she creates the student directory, organizes fundraisers and volunteers. Most recently, she spearheaded the planning of the eighth grade dinner dance, which was fabulous, with a Candy Land theme. It was wonderful. She always has a smile on her face, she's willing to do anything. Okay. We won't go there. Anything that's asked of her and we really appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. And I believe our, yes, our last volunteer is from the high school, Teresa Retsel. Come on up Teresa. And Teresa is currently the PTO President at the high school. She has been a Girl Scout leader, she has been involved in everything, she was at Scholarship Night giving out scholarships, very, very involved, always a smile on her face, always willing to do whatever's asked and we really appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Now, we just have to take a nice picture. Okay, so that's the Volunteer Extraordinaire's and if you are a volunteer and you didn't get the award, maybe next year. You keep trying, okay? Okay. Okay, so now we have two current Board members who are finishing their four-year term and I'd like to recognize them. We'll start with Franny. Come on up Franny. Yeah. So, Franny, what I remember about Franny is what she always tries to remind us is that we're here for all of the kids and tries to bring us back into focus when we sometimes go astray. Franny, you're passionate, okay? You have a heart of gold and we're gonna miss you, but I know, as the sun comes up, you're gonna be sitting there making faces at me every Monday. So, you'll just have a different seat, but thank you for your service for four years to the children and the communities of Region 12. We really appreciate it.
Well, thank you.
Okay, Laird, come on up Laird. These guys are getting a little pewter thing, okay? A little, nice little tchotchke. Laird. So, Laird Davis is a wonderful Board member, keeps us grounded, okay? Whenever things are starting to get hot, you look at Laird and you see somebody who's cool, calm and collected. We're gonna miss that. So, you feel free to visit and come and sit next to Franny so that you also can remind us to do that. But Laird, again, a keeper of what's best for the region and has done a fabulous job. He's always been a gentleman. We're gonna miss you very much. I think you have ten grandchildren, correct?
Correct.
So, you need to go enjoy them.
And survive them.
And survive them. Thank you very much. And our last recipient is Marty Ford. Come on up Marty. Now, Marty has been on the Board since 2001.
Have I?
Twelve years, yes. You took three terms, you were just short of three terms and she resigned or retired in April to do much more exciting things. Marty has been the solid voice of education for kids, okay? She's a teacher, she loves children and just some days we'll all be having our little, little discussions and she'll say, you know, "I don't really know what's going on. What's best for kids? What's the right thing to do for the kids?" So, we'll always remember you for that.
Thank you.
We did not get you a pewter like the other two because you got pewter from Bill Stewart and the Burnham community. So, we got you an apple engraved and we also got you a little gift certificate.
Thank you.
Okay, so congratulations, we are gonna miss you.
Well, I'll miss you too.
Okay. That's my little, we have, I don't know if Chairman wants to say anything, but after he does, we do have some cake and coffee and we're happy to share that and then we'll get on with our meeting.
Well, in addition to what the Superintendent has said, I want to congratulate and thank all the volunteers for all the work that they do. In addition to those who received an award tonight, I know there's many other volunteers who make this system run, so thank you to all of you and to Fran and Laird, we will miss you and thank you for your service. So, I guess there is cake and coffee and some juice here, so if we want to break for a few minutes and have a little reception, we can do that.
Great. Sure! Can we take a group pic with the volunteers? Come on, all the volunteers. Come on Jen, you come too. Yeah, right here. Okay! Oh, my gosh! I know!
Thought you were gonna get out of there.
I had to go teach.
Picture my school, yes. That's a volunteer picture, you belong in that one Marty.
They're very beautiful. They're colors. They're beautiful. How you doing? How's it going? I don't know.
They're all here. They're all here.
Share with us.
They're going to refer to Fran. They have a meeting and they decide. Tell us that they're here in case.
Yeah, I think.
Well, I mean, I was down. I used to think it was weird to stand. I thought I was standing. Then I disappeared.
How you doing?
Well, I should be like, "What's next?"
Well, I'm actually.
This is, we should pass these out. This is what I have so far from my survey. He's coming, seven o'clock, on Thursday.
Real estate, yeah.
I guess it was just a bug because it was the weirdest bug I've ever had. It would go away for four days. I wonder if it's... Blood, he was very, 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 very,[696.29]
Okay. Are you ready to get started?
No, I'm afraid not. No, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I need your little time here.
It's hot in here.
Yeah, it's hot. All right.
Taking out more streets than we do.
Okay.
These are, these are, these are my coaches.
Okay. You ready to get started?
No, I'm afraid not. No, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
I need your little time here.
It's hot in here.
Yeah, it's hot.
Okay.
All right. I'd like to convene the meeting after our little reception. Thank you. Our next item on our agenda is our consent agenda. Is there anyone who wants to remove any item from the consent agenda? Anyone? All right, hearing nothing, then the items on the consent agenda are approved. Thank you. Next is the report of the chair. I wanted to say that I attended the high school graduation this past Saturday. It was a beautiful morning. I presented the, it was a very nice ceremony conducted by Ken Gallo and Dr. Constantino and others of the staff. They did a very nice job. I presented the students their diplomas on behalf of the Board of Education, so she was very proud of the students and they did a great job. The middle school graduation will be this Friday night and I plan to be there as well. I also wanted to mention, I neglected to mention in our last meeting, the 2013 Halo Award winners. These are for the theatrical productions throughout much of the state in this area, and we did have some winners from Chapag High School. The best performance by a leading actor in a play was Billy Haney as Sir Peter Teisel in School for Scandal. The artistic director's award went to Chapag High School's Amanda Taylor. And the best scenic design went to a team of our high school students, Julia McCabe, Bruce Lavini, Connor Schur, Emma Thurmer, Kelby Lawson, Gabe Ducey, Jared Marsh, Sadie Fleming, Kelly Swinson, Amber Wright, Jack Sorrell, Josh Thurmer, Emily Taylor for How to Succeed in Business. So, I want to congratulate them on really a great job. It's a very competitive, very competitive situation to win those Halo awards. I have been asked by the three first selection of the towns of Roxbury, excuse me, Roxbury, Bridgewater and Washington, to speak to the board, to address the board tonight. I know they're here. I believe that the chairs of the boards of three towns, boards of finance are also here. So, I don't know if they each want to speak to us or if they've selected a spokesman.
I think they picked me to, I don't know whether I was the handsome Mr. Youngest or I didn't know enough to say no, but.
Mark, if you would just be in one place.
Yes, I have, yeah. I just have these to, for the board. This is a copy of our statement. This, to open, this is a brief statement, does not endorse or make a statement one way or the other, which is how I believe we wanted our recommendation to be received by the Region Board of Eds. This is from the first selection of the three towns, Mark Lyon, Barbara Henry, Bill Stewart, and the Board of Finance Chairs, Michael Jackson, Gary Lord and Dennis McDonald. There have been several meetings between us, Superintendent Dr. Pat Constantino, Board of Ed Facilities Chair Tony Bedini, Board of Ed Chair Jim Hirschfield and Anthony Amato. We have reviewed options presented to the Board of Ed by the Long Range Planning Committee, financial information from Region 12 Administration, and financial projections from Anthony Amato, and educational information from Dr. Constantino, and the Long Range Planning Committee presentation. The first selection and finance chairs met Thursday, 6:13, to discuss the compiled information. We would recommend that the Board of Ed consider placing the Long Range Planning Committee's option to be a new pre-K to five elementary school on the Chapag Valley Middle High School campus with a schedule of the projected costs for the middle high school repairs before the Region 12 Boarders. The referendum should be scheduled at the earliest opportunity while taking the time to assemble information necessary for a complete and comprehensive presentation to the Region's Boarders. Based on our consideration of the educational and fiscal information we have received, this group of town officials has varying opinions of the merits of this and other options studied. However, we agree that this option should be the first considered by the Region 12 Board of Education for a presentation to the Region's Boarders.
Thank you very much. Is there any member of the board who has any questions, Mr. Lyon? And this is from all three.
The three first selection and the three Board of Finance Chairs.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you all for your time.
Mark?
Yes.
Yeah. I'm sorry. All right, thank you. Moving on to item five, the superintendent's report.
Yes, I would like to echo what the chairman said about graduation for high school. It was wonderful day. The weather couldn't have been more beautiful. The students, the staff were outstanding. The whole week, of all the awards assemblies and the barbecues and the big dig, it was just really a testament to how wonderful the Chapag community is and how extraordinary the class of 2013 is. So, congratulations to everyone and thank you for everyone who made that such a special time for our students. I did give the board members just a real estate summary so far of what I've received as of today from the local real estates. I did send over forty-seven of these surveys to local real estates and this is what's come back so far. So, it's just for your information. I'm assuming if more come back, I will send them out to you. When you see where I have whited out, that's the name, that's the correct English, the name, those people have asked to remain confidential, so I only left the agency. Okay? We have some resignations. Sylvia Lulett from Humanities, Stephen Riley, a physics teacher, and Mary Parkhouse, a paraprofessional. So, I'm sure you join me in wishing them all well as they move on to future endeavors. And the calendar update, I did take the liberty to plan future meetings in next Monday, which I would like to have a meeting if we can. July 8th is the organizational meeting. July 22nd is a special meeting if we feel we need it. July 29th is a retreat. We have Gary Breschew coming. And August 5th and August, August 5th is a special meeting and August 19th would be a business meeting. So, I will revise that if need be, but right now, it's really all of the Mondays in July and August except for July 1st and August 12th. And that's my report.
All right, thank you. Any questions for Superintendent Pat? Thank you, Dr. Constantino. Next, item six, Real Estate Impact Study Update. Chris Karen, is Mr. Karen present?
Yes.
Mr. Karen, if you could just, thank you.
Good evening, I'm Chris Karen. I was asked to come up and just give you where I am so far with the Real Estate Impact Study. I've done some preliminary investigation. I looked throughout the entire state of Connecticut and confirmed what you already knew is that all of the towns in Connecticut do have an elementary school. There had been consolidations, but those consolidations have been within a town. There were multiple elementary schools in that town. Sometimes they consolidated a section, but every town still has at least one elementary school. Norfolk and Colebrook are discussing consolidating their elementary schools. They've done a preliminary study of, as far as the finances for that consolidation. They're continuing to study it. There was supposed to be a vote. That vote's been put off, from what I understand, till the fall. So, they still have the two schools. I also looked throughout the entire United States to see if there are any towns out there that don't have elementary schools. And there were two states that really jumped out that might be ripe for study, Vermont and Maine. And the reason for that is because since the late eighteen hundreds, both Vermont and Maine have had a town tuitioning program. So, if a town did not want to put its own elementary school in, they could tuition their students to a nearby town. And basically, the town without the elementary school would simply pay the town with the elementary school for those students that go to that school. So, there are seventeen towns in Vermont and there are fifty-eight towns in Maine that do not have an elementary school. And there are even more towns that don't have high schools, so a lot of them share high schools also. Many of the towns are quite small, so I didn't think that they would be good candidates for, for study. There were a few that stood out. One that I had, one pair that I found was Win Hall and Stratton up in Vermont that I think would make a good case study. The housing prices in those two towns are significantly higher than the county average up in Vermont. And I think that would be comparable to what we have here because the three towns that we're talking about here are in the upper echelon as far as median household income and as far as real estate values in Litchfield County. Stratton does not have, have an elementary school. Win Hall used to have an elementary school. And what they did is Win Hall decided to close their public elementary school. They opened a private school and they guaranteed admission to any students in those two towns. They didn't have to go, but they did guarantee admission to those two towns. So, that is a situation in which you had one town without a school, one town that had a school, and afterwards neither town had a public school. So, I could study that situation both before and after and see how the closure of that school impacted the property values in those two towns. There were fifty-eight towns in Maine that I've looked at since last week and there are probably three or four towns which I would look at further also in Maine. Do you have any questions? Yes?
Do you know the names of the towns in Maine yet? Do you even look at it?
Yes. And what I look for is the size of the town, how many occupied housing units there are, the median household income, and I'm also looking at the median value of the homes in those towns. Bremen, Westport and Alma are three towns.
Could you say that again, please?
Bremen, B-R-E-M-E-N. Westport and Alma, A-L-N-A.
You're, you're not a skier, are you, Mr. Karen?
I am a skier.
You are?
Yes.
So, you know that Stratton has some stuff going for it that we don't in this area? That it's a major ski resort?
Yes.
And that perhaps housing prices might reflect more on the fact that people go there to ski than whether they have a school or not? Because I think the, I, I haven't seen the recent census, but I know in 2000, the population in Stratton of full-time residents was one hundred and thirty-six. So, I think even the people who work in the resorts there are itinerant.
Yeah, no, they, you are right. They have a lot of people who are not year-round residents. And that is, I mean, you have a situation here, not nearly to the respect that Stratton does, but you do have a situation here where you have people who do not live here full-time.
Right, right. But what I'm saying is whatever the factors might be in, in the different towns, and I know they vary in the different towns, and that's part of our quandary half the time, is that there are different assets and attractions in Roxbury, Bridgewater and Washington that are not similar. But we don't have a huge ski mountain here. So, that if we were to close, you know, if our concern is the, is the changing from three-town elementary schools to one consolidated school, that has a bigger effect than it might have in Stratton and Winall because that could be, you know, a real drop in the buck compared to people who are buying condos or houses there to go and ski them each other.
Right. And I would study Stratton and also study Winall because, you know, that school had an elementary school and then closed their elementary school. So, I think that would be also, you could study them both as a pair.
Right. But I mean, I'm just saying that as far as, as far as effect on property values, one would assume that that's negligible compared to if, for some reason anybody decided, yeah, if it stops snowing in Stratton or if, if somebody reasoned that no one ever wanted to ski there. I'm just saying, I'm not sure that seems to be like the best possible corollary to our situation, just because of the huge factors that are quite different.
Up in Vermont, you're going to have a lot of that, you know, up in Maine also.
Right.
Yes?
Isn't the point of studying it though to determine whether or not the factors that impact it and the factors that impact our area are similar? Wouldn't that be what you would want to look at? You'd want to look at demographics? You might even want to look at how many people or what types of people live there? You know, there are people that live full-time in Stratton. I know I've, I've skied there, so I know that there are people that actually live there and they're not itinerant.
Yeah, no.
They own large tracts of land.
And the results of this study, I won't know until I do it as far as what the impact is on property values. But one of the reasons I picked both of those towns is because the per capita income in those towns are in the upper echelon and also the housing value. Yes?
To me, it doesn't seem as though Win Hall is also experiencing the same thing because they do have some education going on in their school, in their town, and anyone with children has an opportunity to have their children educated within that town. So, I mean, the exercise of, of having these towns looked at in terms of real estate value is to try to find something that is equal to what is in the offing here should we consider consolidation. I'd like to see Win Hall just taken off entirely because I don't see that as, as being equal at all. If consolidation happens, then we would be absent, two towns would be absent a school. So, Win Hall does not fit that. Am I, am I right on that?
Yeah, Win Hall doesn't have a public school. They do have a private school.
But they have a school that any child of a full-time resident would have the option to go to.
Yeah, in, in the way it works up in Vermont, if you're in a town without a school, you could tuition out to any, any private schools. As a matter of fact, there was a, one of the Realtors said that people have moved from a town with a school to a town without a school just to have school choice, which was, which is what that's all about. If they have two kids and one of them wants to go to this school, one of them wants to go to that school. You can't do that if your town has a school. You have to go to that school. But if your town doesn't have a school, you have the choice.
Well, we don't do that here.
No.
So, again, we're trying to find, we're trying to compare apples to apples and I, I don't see Win Hall as being a worthy effort in terms of studying.
Yes.
Could you give us two numbers for Win Hall and Stratton? One would be what the US Census data population would be for both towns? And the second would be, I know you said that their home prices are higher than the county average, but if you can give me the median home price for those towns, just to be able to compare that number to what the median home prices are in our three towns?
Yes.
That would be useful. Because it might be, for Vermont, it might be high, but it might not be high compared to our.
It's going to be for all of Vermont, you're right. And you're not going to have in Vermont the prices that you have here in these three towns as far as, or in Maine for that, for that instance. For the three towns here, the median household income range ranges from sixty-six thousand to one hundred and eight thousand depending on the town. For Win Hall and Stratton, you have about sixty thousand for Win Hall and a little over a hundred thousand for Stratton for the household income. As far as the owner-occupied housing units, the most recent data for the state for the three towns here are anywhere between four hundred and nine hundred thousand dollars. Win Hall has a median value of about three hundred, three hundred and ten thousand and Stratton's about two hundred and sixty-five thousand. And as far as the number of, I don't have the population, oh, I do have the population. I have the population and the housing units. The population for Win Hall is seven sixty-nine and the population for Stratton is two sixteen. So, there's about a hundred households and Stratton is about three hundred and forty-three households in Win Hall.
Making us feel very important, aren't they?
Gee, we could have cheaper housing and higher incomes if we got a mountain. That's clearly what.
That's what I'm saying. Yeah, well, I guess that's what my concern is.
Bridgewater going to build a mountain?
Well, that's my concern is that like, we have a wonderful resort in Washington, but nobody moves to Washington to be close to the Mayflower. People would move to Stratton to be close to the resorts there and the mountain and the facilities.
They passed Whisberry on the way here.
Oh, wow. Too big, baby.
I don't know, Alan.
I don't, that's why I'm not sure. I just don't think that's a viable, I don't know, are, are really only people? Anybody else? Anybody?
It doesn't sound like they're the greatest fit. I don't, I don't know if there's something to be learned there, but I, I don't know that any situation's going to be exactly the same as ours. So, if we want to look for trends, maybe that's useful, I'm not sure. But the towns that you found in Maine, you said there were three or four that you were going to look at.
Yes.
Did they, just on the surface, did they seem to maybe be a closer match, population-wise?
Well, I could, I could tell you.
Or without a private school or?
Yeah, I, I have the figures for the towns I was looking at in Maine. And there are also, you know, the housing unit, which is what's going to be, what's going to be low. The three I told you and then the population is anywhere from seven, eight hundred. Households are three hundred to three fifty. Median household income is fifty to seventy. And owner-occupied housing units, two, two twenty, two forty. There was one also in Carabassett Valley that had a three hundred and ten median housing units. That was the highest one of the towns that didn't have, didn't have an elementary school.
Well, that's not much of a surprise though, is it? Because typically it would be the smaller towns that are losing their schools because they don't have enough people to populate it.
Yeah, or that didn't build them in the first place.
Or didn't build them in the first place.
With the tuitioning program. Because this tuitioning program's been in place since the late eighteen hundreds.
Just a, it's interesting though, what you're not finding is you're not finding something that is a closer fit to what we have. To me, that, that's an important piece of data too, what you're not finding. You're not finding towns with similar demographics, similar size, that have no schools. That is an important point as well.
Right. In Maine and Vermont, you're not going to have the same demographics as you have in these three towns. I think Connecticut, you would have a better shot of finding it, but again, I, I think because Maine and Vermont grew up with this, this school choice and the tuitioning, that you got some of that. Connecticut, and most of the other states don't.
Well, there are, in Maine, for example, there are some towns like Camden, Booth Bay Harbor that are, you know, a gunkwit, that are fairly probably similar, both in size and probably even demographics. But I'm assuming you haven't found that they have no schools in those towns?
Those are my top four that I stated. If, I think Booth Bay, I'm not sure if Booth Bay did, but I could, I could double check on that. There are fifty-four that I looked at.
Anything else?
Okay. All right, thank you. So, I would, you know, I'm stopped right now.
No. No, no, both can take a stop there.
No, move to stop.
Yeah, we need, need some kind of authorization.
Like to make a motion to cease and desist?
Continue on this.
I'll second that.
All right, there's been a motion, so we move in second. I'd just like to say, the genesis for this, as far as I understood, was that there was a complaint that there was no study on the impact of real, on real estate values in these towns if there was, if primary, if a primary school was to be closed in the towns. In response to that, the board considered and decided to hire this gentleman and his firm to conduct that study. We've heard tonight, he's the expert, what he's been able to find to date. I'm not inclined to stop him. I think that he should prepare his report so that it'll be presented, something I believe will be presented to the townspeople for vote and they'll have this information. If it's not, if people don't feel that it's relevant or that it's a match, that's up for them to decide, but I don't want to hear the complaint at some point that no study was done on the impact of real estate values. That's what the board has decided, to hire him to do. So, if there isn't a motion by Alan Brown to stop, to terminate the services that basically does for what you've done to date, and that's been seconded by Susan. Susan?
Not so much a complaint, but a concern that real estate values would go down. This is a very unique situation and it was a concern that prompted the, this study, this, this reach out for additional information. I think the information that, that has been gleaned so far is not worthy of spending the money to chase. It is simply not a good match. And if this is as far as he's gotten, then I'll stand by my second.
I'm sorry?
I'll stand by my second. I don't think it's a good match.
Anything else, Greg?
Yeah, I mean, I, I would frankly prefer to let the study continue because I'd like to see what the answer is. Look, you're not going to find three towns that match ours. I mean, you could look at a lot of towns and go on a map with the populations and look at it. And just, Mike, to answer your question, or at least the two towns you raised, Agunkwit has about twelve hundred and sixty-five people and Booth Bay Harbor has about twenty-one-hundred-and-sixty-five people, which are based on ten censuses. So, these are towns that are small, like the towns in this region. Roxbury is about twenty-three hundred and Bridgewater, I think it's about seventeen-hundred and Washington is somewhere around thirty-eight or thirty-nine hundred, if I'm not mistaken. So, they're, they're certainly within the size categories. The thing about Stratton though, Alan, I don't think your point is well-taken because there are not large numbers of people with large incomes moving there because the mountain is there. I think the people that live there live there because there are jobs there. And one thing that we have that they don't have is New York. And I think if you were to get, if you were to have, to be near Boston, you'd see a similar effect. This area has draws. It may not be a ski mountain. It just may be the fact that a lot of people can work at jobs well in excess of a million-dollar salary in New York City and a lot of those people can afford second homes and a lot of them come here and to this area. And so, I think that we have draws that they don't, they have draws that we don't. The point is, what happens to your real estate values when the school closes? All we really need are towns that are not just complete outliers, that have some sensible relationship to us. Maybe that their, their, their housing prices are a little smaller, maybe they're a lot smaller, but maybe their, their economic platform isn't that different from ours. And it didn't sound like either of the two towns in Vermont had a very different, different demographic in terms of economic platform. But it seems to me that those towns are relatively comparable in terms of trying to see what happens because one of them has a school that was closed. The other one has no public school and instead it's got a private school. May not be a perfect fit, but it's probably worth looking at. The towns in Maine are probably similar in that they may have a situation where a school's been closed and that you can get, I think, some relevant data from that. Are you going to find a doppelganger of Washington, Roxbury and Bridgewater? No. But are you going to find towns that have economic profiles that are not crazy off? And, and they may be able to school us in something? Yes. Personally, I think this is, this, you know, in a perfect world, the towns would be the ones that would be paying attention to the study. But we're paying attention to it because questions were raised. And the one thing I do not want to see is this board make a bad decision because it didn't bother to study something that was important or to have people talking about something where there's no basis for it and it's anecdotal evidence because they voted down a study, especially when it's the people that have asked for the study to begin with because they must have had a concern. So, I think, is this perfect? No. Are there a lot of towns? No. Are there likely to be a lot of towns? No. It's just the nature of the beast, but it's the thing that's happening now. Now, ten years from now, I bet you there are going to be a lot of towns that are in this position with no school and probably more than a few in Connecticut because it's the nature of the depopulation of these parts of the state, in these parts of the country. So, I, I think we should continue with it because I think it will tell us something. It will either tell us that there is no way to assess it or it will tell us that there is and this is, and there's no concern or it is. The.
Win Hall and a little over 100,000 for Stratton for the household income. As far as the owner occupied housing units. The most recent data for the state for the three towns here are anywhere between 400 and 900,000. Win Hall has a median value of about 310,000 and Stratton is about 265,000. And as far as the number of, I don't have the population, oh, I do have the population. I have the population in the housing units. The population for Win Hall is 769 and the population for Stratton is 216. So it's about 100 households and Stratton is about 343 households in Win Hall.
Making us feel very important, aren't they?
Gee, we could have cheaper housing and higher incomes if we got a mountain.
That's what I'm saying, yeah, well, I guess that's what my concern is.
Bridgewater gonna build a mountain?
Well, that's my concern is like, we have a wonderful resort in Washington, but nobody moves to Washington to be close to the Mayflower. People would move to Stratton to be close to the resorts there and the mountain and the facilities.
Past Woodbury on the way here.
Oh, wow. Too big, baby.
I don't know, Alan.
I don't, that's why I'm not sure, I just don't think that's a viable, I don't know. Are really only people, anybody else? Anybody?
It doesn't sound like they're the greatest fit. I don't, I don't know if there's something to be learned there, but I don't know that any situation's gonna be exactly the same as ours. So if we wanna look for trends, maybe that's useful, I'm not sure. But the towns that you found in Maine, you said there were three or four that you were gonna look at.
Yes.
Did they, just on the surface, did they seem to maybe be a closer match, population wise?
Well, I could, I could tell you.
With that, a private school or?
Yeah, I, I have the figures for the towns I was looking at in Maine. And there are also, you know, the housing units is what's gonna be, what's gonna be low. The three I told you and then the population is anywhere from 700 to 800. Households are 300 to 350. Median household income is 50 to 70. And owner occupied housing units, 220, 240. There was one also, Carabassett Valley, that had a 310 median housing units. That was the highest one of the towns that didn't have, didn't have an elementary school.
Well, that's not much of a surprise though, is it? Because typically it would be the smaller towns that are losing their schools because they don't have enough people to populate.
Yeah, or that didn't build them in the first place.
Or didn't build them in the first place.
Because this tuitioning program's been in place since the late 1800s.
Just a, it's interesting though, what you're not finding is you're not finding something that is a closer fit to what we have. To me, that, that's an important piece of data too, what you're not finding. You're not finding towns with similar demographics, similar size, that have no schools. That is an important point as well.
Right, and Maine and Vermont, you're not gonna have the same demographics as you have in these three towns. I think Connecticut, you would have a better shot of finding it. But again, I, I think because Maine and Vermont grew up with this, this school choice and the tuitioning, that it might, might some of that. Connecticut, and most of the other states don't.
In Maine, for example, there are some towns like Camden, Booth Bay Harbor, that are, you know, a gunquit, that are fairly probably similar, both in size and probably even demographics. But I'm assuming you haven't found that they have no schools in those towns.
I, those are my top four that I stated. If, I, I think Booth Bay, I'm not sure if Booth Bay did, but I could, I could double check on that. There are 54 that I looked at. Anything else? Okay, all right, thank you. So I would, you know, I'm stopped right now.
No, no, both can take a stop there.
No, move to stop.
Yeah, we need, need some kind of authorization.
Like to make a motion to cease and desist?
Continue on this.
I'll second that.
All right, there's been a motion, it's been moved and seconded. I'd just like to say, the genesis for this, as far as I understood, was that there was a complaint that there was no study on the impact of real, on real estate values in these towns if there was, if primary, if a primary school was to be closed in the towns. In response to that, the board considered and decided to hire this gentleman and his firm to conduct that study. We've heard tonight, he's the expert, what he's been able to find to date. I'm not inclined to stop him. I think that he should prepare his report so that it'll be presented. Something I believe will be presented to the townspeople for vote and they'll have this information. If it's not, if people don't feel that it's relevant or that it's a match, that's up for them to decide. But I don't wanna hear the complaint at some point that no study was done on the impact of real estate values. That's what the board has decided, to hire him to do. So if there isn't a motion by Alan Brown to stop, to terminate the services that basically does for what you've done to date and that's been seconded by Susan, Susan?
Not so much a complaint, but a concern that real estate values would go down. This is a very unique situation and it was a concern that prompted the, this study, this, this reach out for additional information. I think the information that, that has been gleaned so far is not worthy of spending the money to chase. It is simply not a good match. And if this is as far as he's gotten, then I'll stand by my second.
I'm sorry?
I'll stand by my second.
Okay.
Don't think it's a good match.
Anything else, Greg?
Yeah, I mean, I, I would frankly prefer to let the study continue because I'd like to see what the answer is. Look, you're not gonna find three towns that match ours. I mean, you could look at a lot of towns and go on a map with the populations and look at it. And it just, Mike, to answer your question, or at least the two towns you raised, Agunklet has about 1,265 people and Booth Bay Harbor has about 2,165 people, which are based on 10 census. So these are towns that are small, like the towns in this region. Roxbury is about 2,300 and Bridgewater, I think it's about 1,700. And Washington is somewhere around 38 or 3900, if I'm not mistaken. So they're, they're certainly within the size categories. The thing about Stratton though, Alan, I don't think your point is well taken because there are not large numbers of people with large incomes moving there because the mountain is there. I think the people that live there live there because there are jobs there. And one thing that we have that they don't have is New York. And I think if you were to get, if you were to have, to be near Boston, you'd see a similar effect. This area has draws, it may not be a ski mountain. It just may be the fact that a lot of people can work at jobs well in excess of a million dollar salary in New York City and a lot of those people can afford second homes and a lot of them come here, to this area. And so I think that we have draws that they don't, they have draws that we don't. The point is, what happens to your real estate values when the school closes? All we really need are towns that are not just complete outliers, that have some sensible relationship to us. Maybe that their, their, their housing prices are a little smaller, maybe they're a lot smaller. But maybe their, their economic platform isn't that different from ours. It didn't sound like either of the two towns in Vermont had a very different, different demographic in terms of economic platform. But it seems to me that those towns are relatively comparable in terms of trying to see what happens because one of them has a school that was closed. The other one has no public school and instead it's got a private school. May not be a perfect fit, but it's probably worth looking at. The towns in Maine are probably similar in that they may have a situation where a school's been closed. And that you can get, I think, some relevant data from that. Are you going to find a doppelganger of Washington, Roxbury and Bridgewater? No. But are you going to find towns that have economic profiles that are not crazy off? And, and they may be able to school us in something? Yes. Personally, I think this is, this, you know, in, in a perfect world, the towns would be the ones that would be paying attention to the study. But we're paying attention to it because questions were raised. And the one thing I do not wanna see is this board make a bad decision because it didn't bother to study something that was important or to have people talking about something where there's no basis for it and it's anecdotal evidence because they voted down a study. Especially when it's the people that have asked for the study to begin with because they must have had a concern. So I think, is this perfect? No. Are there a lot of towns? No. Are there likely to be a lot of towns? No. It's just the nature of the beast, but it's the thing that's happening now. Now, 10 years from now, I bet you there're gonna be a lot of towns that are in this position with no school and probably more than a few in Connecticut. Because it's the nature of the depopulation of these parts of the state, in these parts of the country. So I, I think we should continue with it because I think it will tell us something. It will either tell us that there is no way to assess it or it will tell us that there is and this is, and there's no concern or it is and there is a concern. It's one of those three, but to have three choices and say, no, we don't wanna know the answer, I think is not responsible.
Michael?
Just respond to a couple of points that you were making, Chicago. I think, first of all, the point that Alan raised is about full-time versus part-time residents, I think, is an important distinction for us. We are not the first selectmen. The first selectmen care about every resident, whether they're full-time or, or part-time. We primarily care here about full-time residents because those are the people that are sending us their children to educate. So I think we need to make that distinction whenever we're, we're considering full-time versus part-time. I think the, the other concern that I have is that we, we've done our due diligence. We looked at the real estate question and the preliminary results that we just heard were that we're not really finding many close fits at all. I, I doubt, other than getting us more of the same, I doubt we're gonna hear anything new. And we're just gonna continue to incur more money for something that doesn't look like it's gonna pan out in terms of information. I, you know, if, if the gentleman had said that there was a lot more work to be done and he was hopeful that there were some towns out there that were similar in terms of our situation, I'd be the first to say, well, let's look at them, let's, let's continue to study them. But it doesn't sound like they're out there. And to just pursue further research for the sake of, you know, dotting our i's and crossing our t's just doesn't seem like a wise use of money.
All right, Alan, it's Fran.
The research that we're doing is to find out how it would affect property values. So any school that is closed in any town, if the property values went down, that's important information for us to have. It doesn't have to match us. It's about what happens when a school is removed from the town. Do the property values go down? Here, we've got three different towns. We have Washington, we have a lot of second income, um, second homes in New York that are all over the lake and throughout the thing. But, you know, they're no center kids here. We also have, you know, we're not the same as Bridgewater or Roxbury. We have private schools here, we have, so we're all different just amongst ourselves. But the idea that this study was, is to let us know if a school closes, what are the property value effects? We're not even talking about education here. We're talking about property value effects. And that should come across demographics, whether it is in Vermont, in Maine, in New Jersey, anywhere. What happens to the property values? That's the question and this man has to find us those answers. So we need those answers. Whether it's a match doesn't matter. What matters is the property values when those schools closed in those areas. That's the question that we had. Those are the questions that we need to have answered. This is all about property values, it has nothing to do with education. So we want those questions answered, but we have to remember, we are the Board of Education. We're not the Board of Property Values, the Board of Education. But if that's a primary question that our citizens need to know and we need to know, then we need to continue on with this study. We have to have these answers.
Okay, anyone else? I would just like to say, in addition to Fran's point, that number one, it's not only the impact on real estate values if a school closes, but from what the first selectmen presented tonight, has their choice for an option to be presented by a vote or for a vote to the voters, that there, not only that a school is closing, but that another school would open. There would be a school available for all three towns. And the other thing, Michael, with regard to your comment that we really should be concentrating on the full-time folks and not the part-times because they're not sending their students here. They're paying taxes and they're gonna, part-time residents are paying a lot of taxes, most likely, on some larger properties, let's say. And they would certainly participate in any referendum in the region and they would have every right to have this information, just as much as any full-time resident. So we need to keep that in mind. All right, is there any other discussion? All right, there's a motion on the floor to cancel the real estate study where it is at this time. All those in favor of the motion, raise your hand. Yep. All those opposed, raise your hand. Is there any abstentions? What is the vote? No abstentions?
Four yes, six no.
All right, the motion fails. Is there anything else on this? I'd like the study to continue. Thank you.
Thank you everyone.
All right, item seven, discussion on economic and educational impact of options. I understand. Mr. Anthony Amato is here again. It's my understanding and he can speak with it, he's done some revision to the information that was presented to us. Board members will have an opportunity to question, ask questions of Anthony if they would like so. Mr. Amato.
I just wanna tell everyone, you all have the new long-range plan. This is volume two, although Anthony has made public changes, so there is volume three, which we do not have. And he will tell us where the changes are and tomorrow we can get volume three on the.
Version?
This is version two, see ya? Oh, version, I'm sorry, it's a volume, version, volume.
Mr. Amato, go ahead. Thanks, good evening.
Thank you. Pleasure to be back. I just wanted to briefly touch on a few things that have changed since I was here last week. And actually, just a few comments that you will see as I walk through and then open question that I'm answering. So as I go through, if I don't stop on a slide, there's nothing that I've changed on it. I would love to, if you have a question on a slide, stop me as I'm going. Change, the only thing I did here was to just, for those who are getting a little blurry-eyed, to just draw a couple of straight lines at where the design point would most likely be for any one of these options. So it's in the neighborhood of 650. To give you an idea that if the capacity, if the demographics were to come back, how much of built-in capacity do you have in that building before that new building becomes too small? Now, a number of changes or updates here based on clarifications of questions that came in during the meeting or as a follow-up to the meeting. And I tried to put them in bold to make it easier to see. But the first one in the general section was a question was asked about the 10-year projections. And what, what the study does is it takes the 10-year demographics and the effects of that and once you get out to that 10 years, it becomes a steady state at that point. And then all the costs are just subject to inflation throughout the rest of the model, with the exception of, obviously, of the bonding schedule, which is on its own course. So again, the question was asked, you know, how are we projecting staffing costs in year 11 through 30? And taking year 10 and just escalating that out by the degree to escalation for the remainder to get the projected numbers. Number two, middle of the page. This was a point of discussion last time as well, that the capital for the three elementary schools was forecasted in there, but at, at a very limited number. Again, there was no study done, long-range study on any of the three buildings to say that if we weren't gonna commit to these buildings in longer term, what the parallel capital needs, like we did for the middle school, high school, be for those respective buildings. So it's just a point there that they're not included in any of that. So any option that has the elementary schools in it, as they set with no changes, is by definition under, the economics are overstated because if you're gonna do a, a, a study, as long as you add one extra dollar, you're not gonna see any cost benefit out of that dollar. So it's just, it's just gonna overstate the economics. And then at the bottom of the page, again, this is a point I wanted to reemphasize, is that the tuitioning out number is highly volatile. In that, in that particular option, you know, it's middle school and the high school. We, we went to the neighboring districts to get the, the, the cost of tuitioning out. And when you think about the volatility and making a projection on what you believe the neighboring districts' cost per employee would, uh, employee, per student would be over the next 30 years, it's really speculative, right? So all we did was take where they are today and escalate that by three and a quarter percent over the next 30 years. And just to, just to get your mind around this. That assumes then that they are never gonna run into a cost per student problem. Well, the only thing Richfield and any other district around us has to fight is, is inflation. That somehow the demographics that we are faced with, that they're absolutely immune to. I think that's a, that's, that's a faulty assumption on its face, but it's the only thing we had to work with. So that's why I'm saying that option, those economics while attractive, you know, get a lot of volatility on based on how that plays out. Mike?
Did you look at, we, we have a case study for our region in terms of Sherman students.
Right.
And I guess, I have two questions for you. One being, have we increased over the many years that Sherman students have become a shippala, what we charge Sherman per student? Has that number changed dramatically from year to year?
The absolute value of what we charge Sherman, I, I can't answer that. Bob maybe will answer that or?
It's changing based on contract. It's a lot of your hard expenses in school level. It's all part of the journey in the contract.
And the contract is for, how, how long of a term?
It's always been a five-year contract.
Okay, and then from?
So it's been.
And we've had how many contracts?
At least 15 years.
Okay, and if you're looking from each period when we've renegotiated the contract, what's the percentage increase that we've, we've charged Sherman?
It follows our own high school costs on a schedule of 12. It's a lot of the work that goes in state and county. I don't have the exact ratio.
That would be great.
So that's the only point I wanna make on that, is that, that number, you know, can move up or down in big swings. I mean, I don't think it changes the relative impact of what that option suggests, but it's definitely got some volatility in there. And that's, I just wanna reemphasize that point, correct?
Well, it, it seems to me that if, if the, if the number were to have started, the tuition number starts at what our number is, roughly 17,000 to change for students, for tuition. And if it were to go up three and a half percent, that means the next year would go up by 500 to change. So if, and you can plot similar increases every year.
Right.
But that doesn't account for the situation in which a town decides that they have a big budget hole that they have to fill by, among other things, increasing tuition. So if they were to pass along a one or $2,000 increase, that would shoot, you're basically, it would shoot your number way down because now you'd have a base getting bigger and your inflation assumptions.
Exactly, that's, that's my point about the volatility that's represented in that number, more so than volatility in any one of the other options. I mean, if a tree falls on a building and they have to go and rebuild their building, none of that's assumed in any of these projections. So it's just a cautionary note when you look at these numbers. You know, to understand how solid or soft they happen to be.
Thank you.
Just for the sake of completeness, this chart was missing this box. There was a question asked, where did the rates come from? And I think that's on the website now, Pat?
I believe so, yes.
I don't know what the resource number is that it was given, but it's in the probably twenties or thirties at this point. But it is, they are publicly available information that Bob pulled from neighboring districts that we then pulled into this analysis.
On that option two B, why is the middle school, high school repairs lumped in with that one? The middle school, high school repairs, no, I was, I was talking about the one you had up there. That, that one right there. Those repairs are, are a separate issue really. They don't, they're not tied to building that school.
No, they're not, but it was how the option was defined and presented, that the two were, were in combination. They are in essence mutually exclusive in that what you decide to do with this building and, and consolidating into a K through five, they're running on parallel tracks. But I believe the definition of each one of these options is what, it was an answer to, to the question of what to do at the district level, which means that you have to look at the elementary schools as well as look at the middle school and high schools. So each option tries to be balanced, looking at both ends of, of the spectrum. Now, a question was asked, Tony, that I'll get to, which is, could you isolate the K through five new building and separate it out as part of option two A, just so we could see the two pieces coming together? So I've done that.
Okay.
What I want, it's the only change here that I'll call attention to is this last column that I added savings with inflation. This was just, it should've been in the first one, but I missed pulling this out into the table. This is very rudimentary. When I refer to it, simple savings, for those who wanted to look at, just what is the cumulative budget for a given option over 30 years? Is that Q number minus the Q number for any one of those options to give you an order of magnitude savings? Again, this is all in future year dollars, which is why it looks like big numbers, but it is. When you inflate something over 30 years, compound interest and it grows. But again, it's a relative market. So if you look at this, you can see the two options again that are consistent with the percentages that we showed earlier. But I just thought I'd give you a hard dollar figure so you didn't have to try to do the mental math on your own. Now, this is the answer to the question, Tony, that was asked by one of the chairman of finance of the towns. They asked me to spike this out. So a very, a very, a quick way of, of doing this is option one, as you pointed out.
Excuse me, Tony, I'm sorry, this, is this page not, it's not in?
Yeah, sorry, this is, it's Pat's row, this is V3 because of this particular change that came in over the weekend. So we, I think this was already at break, so tomorrow this will be available on the website.
All right, thank you.
So. So essentially, two B, as you pointed out, is the K through five consolidation plus the investment in the middle school, high school. Option one is just the investment in the middle school, high school for all intents and purposes. So the way to get to isolate the school in a very quick, quick way is to take the difference between the two. So this shows you what the difference is on return on investment, what the, the savings would be of a budget, again, a quick cumulative budget minus cumulative budget and what the percentage is on, on average over the 30 years for just this piece of it.
Alan?
Anthony, it seems like this piece can't really live in a vacuum though because this either implies that we don't do anything to maintain or repair this school or that we tuition out.
I agree. I, I'm not suggesting that this is yet another option percent. It was just, can you, can we see just what the K through five is? Understanding that the numbers on this chart on two B are, you know, are, are the net of the repairs plus the K through five. You can see what the repairs are.
So just, just for background, in other words, not, not as far as, well?
Yes.
I, I have a question.
A question from one of the towns, please clarify.
This, this brings something to mind, Mike. We had, I'm, I'm trying to remember the numbers, but let's just say that I'm kinda close. We came very close in 2006 or '07 to building a K5 elementary school. And at that point, because we had, we had, all right. The board came close. We didn't get as far as a referendum. But at that point, building that school, I thought, if I recall, was about 30, 40 billion? 30 million, 40 million, something like that?
Capital cost?
30. So how is it that seven years later, there's no escalation?
Smaller schools.
And involve buying real estate?
And not buying real estate.
We don't have to buy real estate here. But the real estate was. But the real estate was 180,000?
No, 1.8 million.
All right, so still 1.8 million escalation in seven years?
Smaller school. You're no longer planning a school for as many kids by a long shot. Half as many kids, that's the difference.
Alan, if you go back here, and I realize it's an eye chart, but the total capital for just the school is right here at, this is the net now, right?
Yeah.
23, call it 24 million. So that's the cost of the school alone.
23 million.
Alan, there's another piece in that school. That school required a tremendous amount of infrastructure because of the nature of the site.
Yeah.
And that was another piece that you're not seeing here for this.
So when you look at 2B, the point is when you look at 2B, 2B sort of, if you will, starts here, and then you're putting on all the investment, the 28 million you need to spend in this building, and it's obviously just bringing everything down, because there's no cost savings associated with investing in this building, right? There's no staffing changes that you're getting out of that, and there's no infrastructure, there's no cost per square foot savings that you're getting out of it. It's just a raw investment in infrastructure. So it's pretty easy to just get to this point to see what, sort of where your starting point is, if you will, and where the net is. So, again, not trying to suggest a, yeah, a separate option or necessarily a separate decision that, you know, we'd be up to the board to discuss. And then the last one, just for the sake of completeness, I inserted a row in this table to capture the savings numbers we just went over, so you could see it all in one spot. I don't think this is in the current copy. I think, again, this was something that was added or whatever. Is that right, Pat?
Yeah, but simple savings is not in the chart on page 14, but we'll get it.
If you wanted to take notes, I'll-
It's in the-
No, it's not.
Simple savings.
Simple savings is not there.
The next one in there, sorry. Just tell me when you're ready.
That might be helpful for us to write down. Do you think we should just-
If you want, I just, that's-
You want to write that down? Do you have that or no?
Maybe he could just leave it up after he's done.
Okay.
I could do that.
Okay.
And that's really it. There were no other changes, so it was an appropriate spot to end anyway. So I'll ask again if there are any other questions that I can answer at this time. If not, Alan.
I just have a question. You may have answered this Monday when I wasn't here, when I was looking at the video and over this. A couple of questions. One is, when you use resource 15, which you point to in your chart as part of the, you know, operations and maintenance. No, no, I'm sorry.
It's the staffing.
I can't figure out, yeah, I can't figure out where that, where that went. I guess this is my first question. Is in, on your page eight, where does resource 15 fit in there?
This one.
Yeah. Right, okay, there it is, I'm sorry.
So Alan, you see it here, in this red circle?
Yeah.
The first line that says salaries and benefits, K through five, that point is coming from resource 15.
Okay. And that, when you figured out your totals, you started in, obviously, in different places each time because of your construction. So your, resource 15 goes out to 2023 or something like that? So you would just pick a different collection, whether it's four years, five years, six-
Resource 15 is limited by resource two, which is the demographic study.
Right.
So it's as smart as the staffing plan could be as the last data point of where the forecast was to get to number of students in a classroom to determine how many teachers you need. So at that point in year 10, it's steady state, escalated but steady state. So if you're looking at this, in the first four years, it's moved, because when you bring it in from a timing standpoint, you can't take savings if the trigger hasn't happened, and the trigger is occupancy.
Right. But what I guess what I'm saying is, and this is the confusion I've been having over resource 15, you know, a lot of these, if you're doing a calculations based on, you know, your savings out to 30, 33 years.
Yep.
And your calculations really have to kick in on occupancy, right?
Well, I mean, it's cost savings kicks in-
I mean, the savings kicks in on occupancy. But your expenses can't be seen as zero to that point. You have to add in the expenses for existing.
And correct, and then there. So in this particular one, you see the capital requirements coming in. Obviously, there has to lead, you need to build the building to get in, right?
Right.
And this is the capital fees, and you can see that's leading. So this is simply a cash flow analysis. How much money in versus how much money out.
Right, but I guess what I'm saying is, when do you add the values from resource 15, which are all staffing, staffing costs?
Right here. This is, this is just staffing savings. It's a net number. And this number here is how much money, or should we say, in staffing resources-
I'm sorry, maybe if you go up to the screen and point out exactly what you're talking about.
Yeah, all right, it's column five within the red circle.
Right there.
So in other words, that's where you start, because you're not aggregating staffing costs, you're only showing staffing savings.
And this exercise is right, these are net numbers.
Net numbers only.
Right.
Because, and that's why we're precluding even entering into these calculations, the years in which there is no savings yet, because there is no new building of either option yet.
And that shows up here, Alan, is that when you get into your actual budgeting, you'll notice that this number here is a net, is a net budget. So it's what am I currently spending, less savings.
Correct.
So this budget in this year, to use as to why, I picked this example, you're not seeing any savings in year one, year two, year three, or year four. So these budget numbers are, or is, your current year budget escalating. Nothing's changed. You still have those expenses. And until you hit occupancy, you're not allowed to net your current budget until your expenses have changed.
Right.
And it changes by the net amount. So your current expenses are still very much in that top line.
Okay.
And that's the same treatment for cost per square foot, it's the same treatment.
That was the next question, about cost per square foot, because these, it seems as if, and it wasn't one of these that I don't see listed here, but I think there was resource 10, or there was something where we had the operational costs-
Resource 14, or here?
Well, no, resource 14 has nothing to do with the elementary schools, so that's just the, that's just building.
That's correct.
So you must have pulled from 10 as well, which was the one that showed all, all the existing buildings.
Well, 10 I thought was just the staffing configuration.
That was 13. That was 13. I know, this is crazy.
Kind of staffing.
So which is the one, the earlier one that we had?
Hold on a second.
Well, resource, resource three was your budget.
Okay, and the budget was broken down by building at some point, right?
Yes, which is what, which is what that is.
Right. But I guess what the problem is, is that it kind of, I mean, we're implying here that based on actual, not based on actual need for maintenance or operation costs, simply just dividing by square foot is going to give us a reasonable understanding of the costs to maintain each of the buildings, right? I mean, your maintenance needs for the middle school, high school might be entirely different than your maintenance needs for Booth, based on size of the building, condition of the building ages.
You're talking about maintenance needs, you're talking about, you know, capital required.
Well, I'm picking one, I'm picking one of those two, maintenance or ops.
Yeah, the assumption is the cost per square foot, that it currently costs today for each of the respective facilities remain consistent and constant except for inflation. That's your basis.
Right, but breaking it down this way seems to artificially pig it per building when-
Well, no, I mean, Don could speak to that directly, but I don't think there's anything artificial about it. These are actually discrete costs to that building per budget.
So they are discrete costs, they didn't just come from that one-
That's right.
-one document. Because that one document didn't have the central office on it, and that's what I was looking at, is that, is that somebody pointed this out to me?
Well, these are, these are discrete costs.
So in other words, it only costs $731 a year to maintain the central office? Don? Is he here?
Yes.
It only costs $731 to maintain the central office?
Yeah, all the rest of the costs are shared throughout the district.
They're shared throughout the district. So in other words, where are we accounting for those then?
They're in, they're in each of the, the elementary schools and the middle high, based on square footage. Some of the contracts we have aren't written per school, they're written per district. So we split up the dual cost and various other contracts that are written like that by square foot.
Well, all right, it just doesn't seem that this is very useful then, because it's simply-
It's real.
Huh? I know it's real, but if you really wanted to know how much it costs you to maintain a 3,500 square foot area, that's only going to tell you mathematically, as opposed to actually what happens.
But Alan, what are you supposed to do?
You don't have service contracts down in the central office.
Well, you're trying to compare this, the status quo, so this is the current environment mapped to a particular facility, right? So now you're taking this and saying, under your current budget, this is what you can expect to continue to take on a per square footage basis escalating. Now you're bringing in new options, and some of those options changes or takes the place of the square footage. Some options leave some of the square footage behind. So you need to understand that when I replace any of the square footage with brand new square footage, you're in a honeymoon period on the cost per square foot. It's still going to come back, but you do enjoy a honeymoon period. The same thing with renovation. And any building that's left behind in the existing state, it's just saying that you're not spending any more or less money in real dollars than you are today.
Right.
And I think that's about as smart as people were able to get in terms of looking out to the future.
But I guess what I'm saying is, if this changes so that you no longer, let's say you no longer have Booth, Burnham, middle school, high school, or the central office, you just have WPS, then some of those costs are not just going to go away, they are suddenly, the cost per square foot is going to be much bigger, because those costs are going to be for one building only, and they're not going to be, some of them may not be reduced simply because it's for one building as opposed to five. Does that make sense?
No.
No.
Most of the contracts they tell me.
Understand, this is not staffing.
Right, right.
This is heating, this is oil, electric, paint, patch, and repair, or whatever's, again, Don could speak to those budgets directly. So if the building disappears, so does the budget. You know, because it's not people, people are brought in in a different, in a second step, it says that, how many custodians, how many maintenance people do we need district wide? And there is, it's not a linear relationship that every square foot I take out, I can, there's correlation of one person.
Per person, yeah.
Right, so you hit a, you hit a level with it, it says regardless, I'm still going to need two maintenance people, period.
Yeah.
You know, that's why they were kept separate and distinct. This is just about, what is the cost per square foot for this type, this flavor of square footage, where, in any one of these options, I'm replacing it with a different flavor of square footage, and just doing the differential on a square footage basis. Mike?
Could you explain the, if you're looking at Burnham for maintenance, the maintenance cost there is dramatically higher compared to the other two elementary schools. Can you explain why?
I'll ask Don to explain why.
Off the top of my head, Mike, I can't, I have to look into the data. These numbers are based on this series building and that building, I have to look at them.
Yeah, I'd like more information on that, because especially considering that Burnham square footage is smaller than the other two, you would expect that cost to be lower marginally, and it's not.
Unless, unless the building's more expensive to maintain for whatever reason, and then you would expect it to be higher.
The only driver is not just square footage, I think that's, that's the point. I mean, the age of building, right?
Sure.
The condition of the building.
That's why we probably need more information on that.
Right, yeah.
We'll get to that.
Okay. So I'll go to the last slide, we'll leave this up to you, well, screensaver will take care of it, but at least it's there in case you need it. So any other further questions? Thank you.
I have one more, sorry.
Go.
This is, this is for both of you. Why were these options studied without the central office? Because where are you going to put it?
They'll leave it right where it is.
I thought we were trying to reduce our buildings.
Square foot, the central office in each one of those added approximately $3.3 million to the capital cost. And considering if you build a cake, let me go back to the chart, without the chart with the bathtub, you know, your design point for that resource two says that whatever you build two will be over capacity the next day. So without having to spend $3 million on offices, if we really wanted to get rid of that one floor, I'm sure that there's going to be surplus square footage in any one of those options to afford the central office.
It's endpoint of future.
Right, so just to keep the cost down as low as, as low as possible, we just, it just didn't make a lot of sense, in our collective opinion, to put it in that way. You can, just, there's no $3 million in schedules, and you get a rough idea of what you're looking for, but you're getting no cost savings in return for it, so.
Oh, here, you can sit down.
Is there anyone else with any questions?
Thank you, Anthony.
Thank you.
So from yours, if you wouldn't mind being, the entire rest of the student party and-
I, I think best case scenario, you would love to build a new office suite in one of the buildings, but I think we felt for $3.3 million, it wasn't economically feasible, and that probably with the population reports, that we would be able to fit in there, and if, whatever we built, if we thought of that, just thinking, okay, we may need an extra office here or whatever, we may be able to do that when we do the ed specs without it being a whole administrative wing. So that's what we felt.
Also, it is possible to rent. In the town of Washington, there's office space that you're more than suitable, or more than usable.
All right.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, Mike, you have?
Pat, if Washington primary closes an elementary school and the town of Washington repurposed that space, not the central office, but that space for some other purpose, I would assume that the district would incur some cost to the town of Washington for continuing to have our central office space at that school.
I would assume if we stayed there, that there would be some costs associated with it. I just think that the cost is minimal compared to the cost to put our offices in one of those buildings.
Oh, I would agree.
So that's, you know, but I think, I think it would be best to, to find a place in that building somewhere, because we may, as we get smaller, we may be able to share even more staff as we decline.
All right, we're still on item seven. Discussion on economic and educational impact of options, possible recommendation for reverend. Is there anyone? Alan?
Well, once again, this is all great economic work, but it's about that input of options coming out of SLAM and Castle Booze, because that to me is the essential question. Why are we talking 70 million, or 88 gross, or, you know, I mean, we know how we can control our costs, it's that big, huge mammoth elephant out there, which is the construction cost. And I'd kind of like to go through those options, because we had presentations, but we never discussed them, or at least to discuss why the repurposing of this building can't happen for less than $68 million.
Okay.
Because at this rate, our breakeven, I don't have it in front of me right now, but our breakeven of when we start saving money is going to be when this entire room is dead and buried. And, and that is a huge ticket, and to me, frankly, seems to be a Trojan horse about consolidation, that the price tag to consolidate is so overwhelming, between 68 million and 70 million, depending on which plan, it, it just boggles the mind. And so I'd like to get back to that source of information, and why can't we direct Castle Booze and/or SLAM, or have we? to work within our means? Those means being pretty high right now, I mean, we're willing to invest, but that's a lot of money.
Now, I know you arrived late at the meeting, but we have presentations by the three first selectmen and the three chairs.
I've read the letter, and I have no problem with that, because it's about the numbers and property tax.
Larry?
I'd like to make a motion, please. The Region Twelve Board of Education shall prepare a report on a proposal to amend the Region Twelve regionalization plan as approved by the State Board of Education dated August sixteenth, nineteen sixty-seven, including the question to be presented, to be filed with the Commissioner of Education in accordance with Section ten dash four-seven C of the Connecticut General Statutes. This proposed amendment to the regionalization plan, to be contained in this report, shall be, Region Twelve Long Range Planning Committee Option Two B, which includes the construction of a new pre-K to grade five building on the Shippawg campus at one fifty-nine South Street, Washington, Connecticut, along with renovations to the existing Shippawg Middle High School, and the discontinued use of the Burnham School in Bridgewater, the Booth preschool in Roxbury, and the Washington Primary School in Washington.
Second.
Michelle?
I'm hoping before we vote on that, I just kind of wanted to talk about the options a little bit, and I appreciate what the first selectman did in, in looking at the options and choosing, choosing that one. But before we abandon all the others, I wanted to talk a little bit about Option Two C, the new building, which I think I understand the reasoning of the capital investment upfront, that putting forward a referendum. For sixty-eight million versus forty-nine million just seems like a lot more. Although, if I'm understanding the financials correctly, it actually saves more in the long run to build the new, a new pre-K twelve, not a lot more, just a little bit more. The overall savings with inflation, twenty-six versus twenty-one. And I, I wanted to just talk about the middle school, high school, because I'm concerned if we go ahead with a pre-K five, I'm concerned about the middle school, high school, and how those repairs will happen, which I think are so critical. I think we actually need a lot more than just the repairs that are on that list. I think that list was, once they added the site improvement and maybe some labs, it was twenty-four, twenty-six million? And it's really just a repaired building here up on this campus. And I'm also concerned about having to go back to the taxpayers several times, because those repairs are going to be staged, but it was still six million here and three million here, and would we be state, would we be having referendum every three years in order to get those repairs, and might the voters get tired of that? So, to me, the benefit of looking at building a pre-K twelve takes care, it, it all happens at once. The middle school, high school is renovated, well, it's not renovated, it's, it's brand-new. We don't have to come back to the taxpayers every few years trying to repair it. And, and I've got a bunch of dates about all of the high schools in our area. We're, we're behind schedule on a major renovation for Shippawg. If you look at the regions and school districts around us, they have put major amounts of capital into their buildings much more recently than we have, so I think we're a little bit behind on that, and we're due for more than just the repairs. We actually need to do more with this building than just make it operate and paint. And so, I, I'm hesitant to take that one off the table so quickly. Also, something that was mentioned in, I think in the first selectmen's meeting last week, we were, everyone was sort of talking about the tuitioning out and the cost savings, and I don't think that our, I don't think we're there yet as a region. I think we feel that we're very viable, but that we'll probably be having that conversation again in ten years, and we'll have new projections, and we'll be looking at whether keeping our high school students here makes sense. Hopefully, it will, in my mind, but, you know, that's a conversation for down the road. But I feel like if we had a new pre-K twelve building, it would give us a lot more flexibility to make those decisions. If we chose to tuition out high school students in ten years, we would have a building that would be very appropriate for a K eight. But if we build a K five building, then we would have middle schoolers in this huge building that needs a lot of work, with a pool that it really is in top shape. And so I, I feel like a pre-K twelve not only saves operating costs over the long term, but it puts us in a better position for everything, for flexibility in the future, for keeping our middle school, high school students that we have, making us look more attractive by having a new building for our high school students instead of an old repaired building, which those twenty-six million dollars worth of repairs are pretty much the same building. Shippawg would look pretty much the same when you walked in, except it would be painted and have some new doors, and the roof wouldn't leak. So, you know, it, it would be pretty much the same building. Not that that's not, it's not an insignificant amount of money, it's just that I feel like it could use more. So, I don't know, I think for flexibility in the future, positioning ourselves well for attracting and keeping students, I'm hesitant to take the new, the pre-K twelve off the table so quickly.
Good.
Yeah, I've been giving a lot of thought to these various proposals. I think that the... It's hard to look down the line and see what's happening. The one thing we do know is that all the regions in this area are suffering the same problem, basically. From what I can tell from the school statistics, it seems like the only school district that's growing in the western part of the state, and the northern, the western part of the state is probably Danburg. And none of the other regions up here in Litchfield County seem to be getting bigger, and even the large, the large towns or cities, if you want to call them that, like Milford, are getting smaller as well. They're closing a school, an elementary school in Milford. So what this tells me is, it raises the question, the specter, and this may be what might be motivating the selectmen and the Boards of Finance, is ten years or fifteen years down the line, are we really going to be looking at whether we made the right decision to buy a new pre-K twelve school? Or are we going to be thinking that at that point, we have to rethink? Not just the issue of tuitioning out, I don't think tuitioning out's a very smart move. I'll tell you why, because if you lose total control, the numbers look real good on paper, but they're really not that good, and costs escalate higher than the inflation factor. And you could find yourself in a situation where actually your savings disappear, and you actually spend more money that way if it doesn't go well, plus you've lost control. What may really have people thinking is whether or not the regions need to be reexamined. And if the regions are reexamined, and you look at the size of the population, it would support a viable school budget, the likelihood of Shippawg being the K twelve school is probably not that high. It's just my own personal opinion of looking into geographics of it, because we're not likely to be geographically centered over the issue enough in order to create... You're only going to have one, I mean, if you have twenty thousand people living in a district, I mean, you're talking about something roughly the size of the three towns we have, plus towns like Warren, Morris, Woodbury, and Bethlehem, because if you add all those together, you'd probably get about twenty thousand people. But we're not the center of that, we're off on the western side. If you were to go the other way and go more in that direction, the numbers don't work, because the school districts should get, it'd be difficult. Plus, the transportation is difficult because of the way the roads come together, and you can't get from certain places to other ones. But those towns sort of fit into a block with roads intersecting in an interesting way. If that happens, then the question is, what kind of system do we put together here so that we have the most flexibility and the maximum opportunities? Now, there is some appeal to building a K twelve school, because it could become a larger, for a larger region, a K eight. It could very easily become a K eight for a larger region, it could be the western K eight, the two K eight system, or a three K eight system, depending on how big you went, how far you went. So there is, I, I think long-term, a K twelve could be economically workable, it could give us flexibility. The K five, building the new K five and just repairing the high school gives you flexibility too. In other words, it's a, it's an easier bet, because you have less invested to get there, and hence it gives you more flexibility. That may be what's motivating your thinking, which is that if you have that greater degree of reflexibility, where you can decide, this year we're going to tuition, or maybe in five years, we're going to reimagine the region into a larger region, it does give you more pieces of flexibility, because you haven't invested a lot in the physical plant, which you may not be able to recover. But the other thing you have to look at on these, these options, and the other thing that's motivating me, is if you study them carefully, you're going to see that three options immediately fall into the category of options that, number one, are going to cost money over time, not have any potential to save. And, and number two, just don't seem to be, they seem to have major issues with them. In fact, if you look at the chart on page fourteen, what you see is if you were to put an X in the box, any box that was either red, or a box that where things needed to be positive, they were negative, you're going to see that Option One has two Xs, that is a three boxes. Option Two A has one, Option Three has two, Option Four has one, the tuitioning out's not good educationally. Option Six, all three are in the negative category, and Option Seven, they only evaluated one, and it's in the negative category, because it's on the low end of the educational spectrum in terms of what it does. So what you really find is that if you look at it from that perspective, there are only two options that fall into the box of not having any negative marks against them, from the standpoint of this, you know, the, the educational issues and the budget, and the return on investment issues, and that's Two B and Two C. So they fall into that middle category. So when you look at all of these things, and you look at the ones that are not economically viable, they just... I don't see how we can in good conscience put up something that's going to cost the region more money in the long term, as opposed to something that at least has an opportunity to save something. So I think if you look at it from that perspective, you only see two viable options, Two A, Two B, and Two C. And the question on those two is, how long a bet do you want to make? And how much do you want to spend? Now, Valerie makes a good point, that you're putting a lot of money in. However, I'd point out that looking at page eleven of the V two, you'll see that Option Two B, which is what the, which is what the selectmen want, you're going to spend forty-nine million dollars, on an Option Two C, you're going to spend sixty-eight million dollars. But, you're going to get paid back on both of them, and on Option Two, Two, Two B, you're going to get paid back in year twenty-two, and in Option Two C in year twenty-three. So if you look at it long-term, it's only a year difference on when that pays back the investment that you put into it. So even though the investment is larger, it pays a larger dividend over time, most likely because building a K twelve saves a lot of money on the operation and improvement of the building we have. So I think when you look at it from that perspective, I don't think if you pick Two B or Two C, you'd be that far off over the long term. You'd be further off over the short term, because of the amount of money that you had to bond, but you're going to pay that back over the long term, and that's where they both sit in the same place. So those, those were my thoughts on it from an economic perspective, is that those two economically, you know, were, and, and when you add the education piece, at least on this chart on page fourteen, they seem to fall into that category of being viable options, or more viable options perhaps than the others.
Valerie?
Don't quite know who you were supporting on that, and I'm glad to hear it. I'm, I'm going to speak in favor of the motion, which I think is what we're supposed to be doing. I want to make it, I want to get it straight, because I was at another Ed Connection meeting, an emergency meeting, so I was delayed here. Mark Lyon, Barbara Henry, and Bill Stewart all agree that Two B is the appropriate decision they would recommend to the board?
It is, it is the option that they're asking the board to put to the voters for a vote.
And, and it's Mark Lyon, Barbara Henry, and Bill Stewart?
Yes, and the three Boards of Finance chairs, it does say here...
Yeah, I read, I read it, just want to make clear, so...
But the last, just to be, just to be fair, the first sentence of the last paragraph says, "Based on our consideration of the educational fiscal information we received, this group of town officials has varying opinions on the merits of this and other options studied. However, we agree that this option should be the first considered by the board for presentation to the regions voters."
Well, I speak in favor of the motion, because what we do need here is some kind of agreement from the town officials to begin with. We certainly have to do a lot more study. To me, the idea of the present configuration is not workable. The idea of reconfiguring within Roxbury, Bridgewater, and just repairing here is very short-sighted. These schools are, just is not going to work as a good educational system for three elementary schools. And once again, the parameters set to renovate or build in this area, either a new pre-K twelve, or take the core of this building, those aren't options anyone can tolerate, I do believe, because they're just financially horrific. And we never did ask our consultants to work within the walls. They have lots of space here. As I recall, the capacity of this building was originally something like fifteen hundred kids. Might be closer to twelve hundred, but we've never been at capacity within the walls. And no one is saying that we, we want to stay as we are, because there has to be a reconfiguration here to benefit the elementary school, and also frankly, to open this space up. But the parameters were not set, that's my problem. Having said that, though, if the three first selectmen and the Boards of Finance believe this is a better solution, I do so also, because I think, even though we're building a new building, that in and of itself could be repurposed down the road, perhaps, to house additional students. For instance, that could be our new, down the road, pre-K twelve. We will have state-of-the-art for all three towns, finally. We will have cost savings. We can still keep this facility and the community, portion of this community, of this building, the pool, the theater, all the activities that go on here, and we're not destroying this building, which I find environmentally disgusting. And we can, I think, make the best of both worlds at a price tag that is still high, but is tolerable. And I do speak in favor of, of Two B in conjunction with the leaders of the three towns.
Again, I just want to be clear, to be fair, they did not necessarily say that they felt that Two B was the best solution. They said that they felt Two B was the one that should be presented to the voters for a vote.
And I agree with them, because it's not the best solution, but it's one that I think is worthy of our endorsement.
All right, Pat? Dr. Castillo?
Yeah, I just want, from someone who has sat in meetings with the selectmen and the Board of Finance, when we talked about this option, what they liked about it most was the flexibility. And although it said, sits here that it's going to be forty-nine million, it really can be less based on what work we need to do now for this building. When we did the original plan for this building and asked Castle Booze for a recommendation, it was out twenty years. So what the selectmen liked about this option was that we don't have to go out twenty years right now. We can go out five years, we can do what we need to do to get accredited by NEAS, make sure that our science labs are where they need to be, do all the ADA work, and then after that point, once the new building is completed, which would be two thousand seventeen, you would have another five years of population reports. You would have the opportunity to see how many students, if need be, will fit in the new building. Can middle school move there? Can you possibly build another extension? Can you tuition out? It leaves you with a lot of options. So that forty-nine thousand million dollars is really a very, very high number, and it would be much less if that was the option that you took to a referendum.
Are you sure, I mean, are you really prepared to say that?
Yes, I am. It will be, well, let me just ask Anthony one question. Anthony, you just, you told us before, how much is... Anthony, you just, you told us before, how much is the, just the pre, building a new pre-K-5?
Thirty million.
Thirty million.
Thirty million.
Okay, thirty, so it's about 30 million. So I am confident to say that it would be no more than 40 million dollars. I am confident to say that if we only looked out five to 10 years with the work that we've done, because a lot of it was work that we needed to sustain this building for 20 years. That was option one's job, and that's what Castle Booze gave us, but we can phase that in, and we can make bigger decisions once you phase in what you're going to do at the elementary. It's just the conversation that came up, I'm just trying to give a point of clarification.
All right, Al.
Well, that's interesting, because sometimes I think that, you know, with all of our concerns we have, and all the concerns about volatility, and the fact that we're at the bottom, just coming out of a recession, the fact that the state is in economic turmoil, that one would believe unless Connecticut is finished within a few years, something's got to change. One would believe that we're in such a volatile situation that we might be wanting to do things on a five-year basis and both a 20-year basis. And in which case, now that you bring this up, if the part of 2B, which is actually all of option one, if that can be done on a phased basis, why don't we do five years of option one, which drastically reduces that option, and wait to see what the economic and population situation is like in five years? And that now becomes the least expensive option.
Could you explain that again? We live with the present configuration for five years, and then think about it again?
Well, that's what she wants to do with this middle school, high school building, is we work on this building. We do the five years, we do the five years' work, the most important needs for NEAS accreditation, for the labs, the things we were talking about, which are a phased process. Pat just said that as opposed to going out 20 years, go out five or 10 years instead in order to reduce the cost of the option we're talking about, option 2B. So I'm saying if that is suddenly possible, why are we not considering, due to the volatility of our situation, doing the first five years that are the most critical, the high priority, five years' worth of work on this building, while we wait and see what's happening to the existence of the state of Connecticut as far as supposedly we now have the worst-
It's genius on your part, I love what you're saying.
Well-
Because it's a way to get what you want, but it's not looking at the cost of the old building. What we have to do is start now, and indeed, we'll probably keep our kids in their present configuration. And that's the other beauty of this solution, is that it is the least disruptive of all of these more major projects. It will not disrupt people up here necessarily, and certainly, the elementary schools will still house their kids, but we have to commit to building. It's not like, let's wait and see, and then we'll go out five years, and we'll be dealing in far more expense.
I'm just saying as far as the logic, is if you can lock 10 million off of option 2B, then you necessarily can lock 10 million off of option one and option six, too.
All right, is there anything else? Michelle?
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just, I'm still concerned about the middle school, high school, and I'm wondering, I'm stalking, but Pat, maybe you'll remember from conversations, if we build the new pre-K-5, and we do the first, let's say, five years of repairs, we bundle that, those two together, so instead of going out for referendum for 49 million, it's the 30 million plus, I, you know, I don't know, the first five years, which was maybe six or seven million dollars worth of work, I don't know. Then does that mean in four years, we come back to the voters again for the rest to finish the repairs?
No, I think the option is that it provides some more flexibility and more information, because there are, I don't want to speak for people who are at that meeting, but certainly there was a common theme, that they are concerned to put all that money into a new building, and maybe the population won't be here. And the taxpayers are nervous. They really, especially the board of finance, they come to the table through the lens of being a taxpayer. So I think what the consolidated thought of the group was that, let's do what we can, be cost-effective, and leave our options open. So it wasn't discussed that they would fix this building, it wasn't discussed that they would tuition out, it wasn't discussed that they would put another addition on the new building. It was just that, in five years, you will have more information, if the population turns, if the economy turns. And that's what they were looking for. But they also understood the expense of keeping those three buildings open.
Greg?
Looking at option 2B and 2C, they are definitely our strongest options when you go through, number-wise. For me, it always comes down to the education and pulling people together, and giving our children the best tools to succeed. New school, K through 12, knowing that we're covered for all of our accreditations moving forward, and that if we are planning forward, Michelle said it best, if things do change, and something does change, then that K through 12 new building could house K through eight, and then we could look later on down to tuitioning out the high school, or to do all those other things, like coming together with different regions and doing something different. We've been thinking long-range planning, this, the whole last two years has been long-range planning and seeing, we know what we need to do going forward. We also know, thanks to Anthony, what the savings will be moving forward. We can also realistically look at the numbers in front of us and know what makes the most fiscal sense. We can also see, you know, with the curriculum and instructional alignment, what makes the most fiscal sense. But to give our children the tools to succeed is what we need to do. We have to think educationally, and we often have to think long-term going down. I don't want to see us bandaging things for five years, you know, we've been doing that for too long, we've been cooking the can down the road for too long. We have long-range plan that came together that shows us where we need to go, and now we have to make the most responsible decision. Realistically, I honestly think that 2C is the most responsible decision if we're looking long-range down, putting us all together under one roof, that is, a top-of-the-line new facility, air quality, all the other things that are not coming out right now, but that put us into a fresh, new, we're ready to go into the 22nd century, giving our kids the best, and then, you know, have the long-range planning, keep going out, like we have our studies to go forward. I love the way Blair phrased this whole thing, except for I'd like to see it be 2C and not 2B, because I think that would be the best long-range planning for a region, and Michelle said it best. I was over here nodding the whole entire time. She was right on the money with that. Thank you, Michelle.
Michael?
I just, I think I want to simplify it and just remind the rest of the board exactly what we're proposing again. We're looking at being the first district in the state of Connecticut that would be closing their local elementary schools, at least for two out of the three towns. I'd like Chappau to be known for a lot of things. I don't know if that's what I would choose as my first distinction. I think we're also looking at closing elementary schools that are some of the best schools in the state for CMT scores. That seems counterintuitive to me. To me, that 2B, the only thing that is attractive to me about 2B is it clearly will answer the question, which is before the board, about the idea, once and for all, of whether the three towns support the idea of a combined district elementary school for all three towns. It does do that. However, I just want to say that it doesn't necessarily mean that that is the best option. It might be, from an economic standpoint, it's a very good option, but that doesn't mean it's the best option. I think that we have a number of concerns, otherwise we wouldn't be looking at things like real estate values. I have a number of other concerns, too, about that. You know, one of the reasons we formed the Long Range Planning Committee was to address the problem of declining enrollment. Forming a unified district doesn't necessarily do that. It seems like it's a stopgap measure, but it does nothing about attracting more students to the district, which is, I think, what we truly need for a long-term solution. So that's my issue with 2B. I would be much more in favor of something like option six, which, although it's economically marginal or budget-neutral, those are the words right from our document, seems to address a lot of the concerns from some of the individuals that do believe that our local elementary schools have real value.
Good. No, I just want to say something. I know it's, I think it's plain to everyone who knows us on board, but we are not deciding anything tonight. All we are deciding is what options we're going to put to the voters to let them decide. And we all know that if the motion that's on the table passes, which is that the board will prepare a proposal as required by statute to amend the regionalization plan, that we require the affirmative vote of all three towns. And I can't, I don't know what the drawback is of letting the people in these three towns decide. If it's defeated in one or more towns, it's defeated. If it's not, if it's supported, let the people speak and have their vote. We're not deciding this, we're simply deciding an option to put to the people to allow them to vote.
Valerie?
I agree. And I do think it's very important to me, 9/11 is already 12 years ago, and the 10 years goes so fast, maybe it's my age. The next 10 years, in 10 years, we're going to have 39 kids, and I do believe, because we have great history with this demographic study, great history, in 10 years, which was going to go like that, we're going to have 39 kids in Burnham, 63 kids at Booth, 98 kids at Washington. The entire region is going to have 528 kids. And, you know, unless we, you know, develop some nuclear plant somewhere in the region, we are as we are. We are older population, retirement population, country homes for New Yorkers who pay their property tax and provide us services, and they don't use those services. We are what we are. And we're not standalone. All of Litchfield County has this problem. Most of western Connecticut has this problem. So I think frankly, we're looking forward, in a unique way, to provide the better education for this dwindling population of elementary school kids. I find it abhorrent, still do, moved into this district specifically for region 12, but I find it abhorrent that our three elementary schools do not have air conditioning, they do not have adequate heating, they do not have, pardon?
Burnham has air conditioning.
Units, they do not provide a PTO. They do not have a lunch program. They do not have a lot of things-
Burnham has lunch program.
Broad in, pizza every other day.
Stop interrupting her.
Thank you.
It's your turn, you can speak.
But the point is, we are a fairly affluent set of communities, and our elementary schools are not living up to the expectation. So we have an opportunity here to start fresh, to disrupt our kids far less than any other alternative, and give them this incredibly healthy, cost-effective, hopefully somewhat lead-based facility, which gives us also flexibility. And I agree with Jim, let the voters figure it out and tell us. But this, to me, is the only reasonable thing we can do because of the crushing, absolute, cannot-deny demographic decline.
Michelle?
I just wanted to clarify and say that I would support the motion on the table, because I think it's important to listen to what the select people have said and the boards of finance. And I think it achieves much of what we wanted to do. I'm just concerned about the middle school, high school down the road, and I understand the flexibility and wanting to be able to make decisions with more demographic information before we invest in that. I understand that, and I would support the motion. I just was wondering if others on the board were concerned about moving on to the middle school, high school.
Greg?
I guess the thing that most troubles me is the long term. And I know that there's a lot of sentiment to keep, you know, at least in some communities here, to keep their elementary school, but I'm thinking in terms of the long term, which is realistically, what are the chances that you're going to be able to keep schools open when the populations are as small as the ones we have? And I'm also a little bit afraid that we may just lose our middle high school in the bargain as well, if we're not careful. And the one, the one thing that concerns me is not thinking on a larger regional platform, because I really, I really think that when we're down there at 528 kids in the whole region, and we're looking at a high school with fewer than 200 students, I think we're going to have a lot of very tough decisions to make at that standpoint. And I understand why the selectmen and the boards of finance want flexibility. The question is, if you want to maintain, in the face of future trends that do not look good, if you want to maintain a school within what is now region 12, where do you draw the line? Where do you establish your readout? When I say readout, R-E-D-O-U-B-K, I'm talking about like a place you go to hole up, to fight the battle of trying to keep a school in these three towns. Where do you want to draw that line? Do you want to say, okay, let's keep our elementary schools where they are, let's keep the middle high school where it is, and we'll just limp into the future, let's reconfigure the elementary schools and keep the middle high school and limp into the future? Or do we want to say, if we establish something that gives us basically a modern, fine, state-of-the-art type facility in what could become the western end of a larger region, is that a smart future bet? Is that a bet that's going to keep the school here? Or do we run the risk, if we do build a K-5 at Chappau, do we run the risk that that's all we'll end up with? Maybe that's not the worst risk, because at least we'll still have a school in the district. But you have to ask, if that's all we're going to end up with, or is it a better bet to go the other way? But I understand the need for flexibility, so I'm not necessarily opposed to the concept of flexibility. But I'm thinking that this would be a lot easier decision if we could see, if we could all look in a crystal ball and see where this is going, and we just can't. And five years more demographic data, I mean, it's probably, you know, 90% chance that it's going to be five years of worse news. And if it is, if it does come back, it isn't going to come back to what it was in that period of time. You're not going to have enough data in five years to know, we're definitely headed back to 1,200 kids in the district if we can just hold out until 2030. You're probably not going to get that data. What you're going to get is it's going to fall somewhere between a steady drop on the current trajectory and somewhere of a small increase. It's going to fall somewhere in between there. So what you're going to say at that point is, boy, if only we had made the decision five years ago, we'd now cost us $6 million less to solve the problem. And that's what I'm a little bit of afraid, that's the risk you take when you want to get more information. You take the risk that it's going to cost you more to solve the problem. And how do I know that? Go back 30 years. I talked to a bunch of people who sat on the board a long time ago, and I asked, what did you guys talk about? What's the big issue that was concerning you? Whether or not we should consolidate in the face of dropping numbers? And I'm saying, okay, so here we are, 25, 30 years later, asking the same question, dealing with the same issue. And guess what? The cost of solving it is now many times the cost of that. Because had the issue been solved 10 years ago, you'd be halfway through paying for it. Had it been solved 25 years ago, you would have paid for it, and now you'd be making the first renovation to a different school. But you can't look back. You have to look forward. And I think there are risks, no matter which way you go, there are risks. And flexibility is key, but you may have to pull the trigger for four or five years because you may have needs that show themselves at that point. So that's all, that's all I'm suggesting, is it's a very hard decision to try to figure out what the future is going to be. But the one thing we know is, is the current configuration economically and educationally has got issues. Primarily economically, actually, educationally, it's not so bad, but in terms of alignments. But dollar-wise, it's a loser, it's just not taking us anywhere. We're going to spend a lot of money, and we're never going to get it back. And so that's one thing, we have to do something. The question is, which of those two that are viable?
Thank you. Al?
Just want to clarify a couple of points. Burnham has air conditioning, Burnham has a lunch program, and Burnham is living up to its expectations, if one is expecting the top scores in the DURF. But not to set Burnham apart, because I, for one, feel- But not to set Burnham apart, because I, for one, feel that there are reasons, strong reasons, for elementary schools in each town. And not to look back, but perhaps it is good that 30 years ago we didn't consolidate because we've survived until now. I do realize that times change. But I also want to point out that this process has really, perhaps out of choice, perhaps simply by the population, by our numbers, and the way they balance out in terms of our interests, has been very, there has been no data, very little data in our work in the last several years, unfortunately. So that leaves, as usual, people from Bridgewater trying to keep Burnham, and people from Roxbury perhaps split, or perhaps leaning towards not worrying about Booth as much, and people in Washington very interested in consolidation. And that same makeup of opinions and understandings and needs and perspectives went into the Long Range Planning process, which is how we ended up with a selection of us, making those same judgments in a, what has been deemed a community-based effort to come to terms of what would be advantageous, or desirable, or, you know, efficient in our area, which is why all we really have here, as far as the hard, the hard concern, is the financial concern. This is all about cost. Because when you look at this, when you look at the other fields on here, the top one, which was the effort, the outcome of so much effort on behalf of ranging between 15 to 40 of us, depending on the different meetings that we had, along with Long Range Planning Committee, this top one is really just opinion-based. It's not data-based. We never really researched. We went by our understandings, and a lot of it was very carefully thought out, and as you could tell by the process that we had to present these a couple of weeks ago, there was a lot of tension even amongst our groups as we tried to sort out how to judge these things. We were just judging. And some of these, people have pointed out, the difference between the rating on Option 6 and the rating on Option 1, which is veritably the same option, is so different, because they were just made by different people. And as far as this being a test of the community, this option was done by two administrators. So I'm not, I'm not in any way trying to discount what I and so many of us have done for the last two years, but you have to realize that it's entirely subjective, and that all we're really looking at, because all we've ever really done in this issue, is look at things from a financial point of view. So from our financial point of view, that Mr. Amato worked so long and without any financial compensation for himself to do, he came up with answers that show very clearly what is financially going to point us in a certain direction. And what clearly points us in a certain direction is tuitioning out. And that makes all of us kind of nervous, because, and we all have opinions on that. As you can hear tonight on this Board, we have different opinions on 2B, 2A, 2C, and I think we all think the other options aren't viable, but those three, we've heard different arguments about those. Which once again brings us back to an issue that we're all in in the first place, because it's a financial issue. We think somehow that it costs too much to sustain our region the way it does. There have been voices to this effect for the past 30 years, that we're throwing our money away because we are sustaining four buildings, we're sustaining buildings that, regardless of their number, their size are too big for our population, and it's all about the money. Because the only other work we've ever done has been purely subjective, and then now is subjective interpretations of these economic figures. We're now looking at these going, okay, well, money isn't everything, so maybe this tuitioning out idea, which is just glowing with money savings, is kind of, yeah. And all of a sudden, the whole idea of the best, the next best option is the building, the PK to 5 building, and maintaining this current building. We all have these emotional subjective things that we are applying to this. And one of my concerns is that no one has actually done any research into whether, as us provincials in Bridgewater believe, there is an actually, actual reason why we want to have elementary schools in our towns. They might not be financially delicious in the slightest, but other than that, and we're starting to get into other than that, because the way we've reacted to this very black and white, or red, green, red, green and gold colorations here, but once we got out of those numbers, we're in a whole different kind of sentimental area that we're also afraid of, that we kind of pin us, Bridgewater people, in all sentimental of Burnham. But go beyond the sentiment. Go beyond the things that are not financial, that are not just the way our three communities differ greatly in how we subjectively attack this, but look at the fact that regardless of what it is in terms of the efficiency of a bold new building, or the, you know, the better heat and the pipes and the lunch program and the mold and the this and that, all the things we talk about when we talk about a brand spanking new building, go back to what it means to have an elementary school in your community, and is there an actual importance to that? We never examine that. We treat that as something that, we didn't bother to research for two years. It's just something that us crazies in Bridgewater care about. And we feel that other towns should care about that, too, that there is something meaningful to that, that there is something important in the emotional, sociological development of your children, which this, as a Board of Ed, is responsible for. That we're not just imposing things on municipalities, that we're not just trying to spend more money, that we're actually seeing that there's a difference between a small community school in the elementary level than there is between a consolidated school at the elementary level or a consolidated school at the high school level. And to see that, and one of the things that we're noticing, as anathema as that may be to people in this room, some of you, and some of you it's not, is that even our efforts to find other parts of this country, or at least of this region, people avoid that at all costs. It's very hard to find even correlative towns who have done that. So just to sum up, I'll stop talking. If this is all about the money, then clearly tuitioning out is the way to go. If that is painful to anybody, if you want to protect something, what you're protecting is important. And what some people have been digging their heels in to protect is important in a different way. And for that reason, it probably doesn't matter which of these we vote on, but I'm going to go with what the Selectmen have said, and it's a difficult paragraph, but we probably need to vote on something just to see exactly what our next direction is. And I think even Dr. Costantino said that for a while, at least the Long Range Planning Committee. Let's get something out there so we can get an actual pulse. Which brings me to my final question. I always believed that an actual referendum, that was a real referendum, was differentiated from an advisory referendum, because a real referendum that is binding had a dollar figure attached to it. I didn't hear a dollar figure in this. Is this because this motion is to build a report that will end up with a dollar figure, and that's what we're going to then have wording for, that we have a referendum for?
Yes.
Okay, so this is not the motion to go refer, and this is the motion to build an assessment, which will have a final number that then goes to refer.
The statute requires, if there's a, if the Board of Education deems a modification to the regional plan to be advisable, that the Board has to approve preparing a report to the State Board of Education. The motion did specify as to what the question would be, but as far as the actual dollar amount with the date of the referendum, that is not determined.
Okay, so it will be binding only with a dollar?
Oh, yes, and it will have a dollar amount when we go to vote. And I just want to respond to something you said, Alan, the thought. First of all, you say that we don't know, you know, if it's only an economic issue, but there are other issues that are important to the towns. This is how we're going to find out. The people are going to tell us what's most important to them. So I agree that it should go to vote. But this sentiment that we in Bridgewater want our school, and the people in Roxbury half-heartedly, you know, halfway, some may want it, some may not, they're willing to close their school, and the people in Washington, Washington are ready to close their primary school, I don't know any of that. And nor do you, unless you've spoken to everyone in Bridgewater. And I think, I understand that there are vocal folks from all three towns that we hear from all the time, but we don't know what the people of these towns want until we put this to a vote and let them decide. So, you know, I don't know that any of the three, what any of the three towns might vote here. Alan.
Well, I do want to defend what Alan, the fact that some of this is subjective and some of this isn't data-driven. The fact is, the whole process that we were all sitting in on for the last, I don't know, three or four months, developed some very interesting ideas. It was about thinking outside the box, themed schools, for instance, renovate the core and a new pre-K 12, tuitioning out. There was a lot of things being discussed, and a lot of qualitative, not quantitative information, and a lot of ideas in how to save Bridgewater, for instance, how to make that somewhat of a gateway schools that is close enough to population centers so that kids will want to go to the elementary school and then eventually filter into middle and high school. All of that was kicked around, and it just didn't go your way. And that's shared sacrifice. It is a shared sacrifice. If the voters, and we don't know how the voters are going to go, but everyone sitting on this Board is going to have a shared sacrifice of closing an elementary school, if that is the will of the voters. But qualitative information was fully discussed, thinking outside the box, and much, much to my horror, the idea originally of tearing down this building was just like, I thought that was crazy, still do, but themed schools, there was lots of creative input, and this isn't data-driven. I mean, who's come down this road before? I mean, how can you make it data-driven? Some information we know. Some information we know that we've been spending more than $30,000 a year to help people in Bridgewater keep their elementary school open. But there comes a tipping point. And also, far more important than that dollar figure, is the fact that, do you really want to have seven kids in the same classroom forever and ever? In second grade, and in third grade, and in fourth grade, the same kids? Demographics show that to be the case. And those kids are not going to get the best education, because they're not feeding off of a larger group and getting different teachers and different exposure, and yes, a better plan. So there's lots of qualitative information that we've been kicking around for a long time. It's not just about the numbers. This is no way to run an elementary school, to have seven kids in a classroom. It isn't.
Emily.
Okay. I'm having a little confusion with us changing the parameters of what the long-range goal was, because when I joined the Board and signed up for the Board, it was 10 to 20 years out. If we are now changing that right now, I have a small problem, because in my opinion, and we're all kidding ourselves if we're not here with our opinion of what just happened for the last few years, in my opinion, I personally like 2C, because I want to make a commitment to the kids of the region pre-K through 12. I like the idea that the three towns came up with something they think the voters might agree on, or that we should put to referendum. That gives me hope that we might someday agree on something. But from sitting here, going through all of the things, trying to get ideas from 10 to 20 years, which is the commitment I thought we were here to make, I like the idea of a pre-K to 5, but the middle high school is a huge gap, and I feel doing a $5 million Band-Aid might be what we need to do, but it is, it's not what I thought I signed up for. I personally like 2C. I don't like changing the parameters of now it's long-term, but we don't like how that looks, so now we're not long-term anymore. I take issue with that. I don't dislike 2B, but I really sincerely worry, having taken a very nice guided tour of this particular facility, we're kind of putting up, we're deciding right now that we are potentially losing this school very shortly, I mean, within 10 years. It's possible it's a dumb drastic skull that way. That's kind of what we're saying there, if I feel. I didn't realize that was one of the things, I mean, tuitioning out was, but I don't like it going from long range to, we don't like that, we're going to go with five years, and maybe it'll look differently.
All right. There's a motion on the table. Are we ready to vote?
I don't know if we are. You know, it's interesting, we talked, you know, we talk about the towns and what people have in their town, and I had an out-of-town guest, had the chance to go back and forth across all three towns in the region, going various places that we've been going. They live in the city, and they asked me this question, how do you, I mean, how do you know where you are? What's the difference? And I said, well, basically, the difference is, is that we drew some lines on the ground based on how far people wanted to travel to go to church in the 18th and 19th centuries, because that's how our towns got laid out. This is all a historical accident. Every town in Connecticut is a parish of a congregational church.
Greg.
The point I'm saying is, is that these are lines drawn on a map 200 years ago, and now we have identities based on them. And what I'm saying is, is that these identities have meaning, and I understand that. And I understand people feel that way. What I guess I don't understand is how, if we were to put them into one school, why we would suddenly lose all the abilities we've had before. And I think that where we are today, with population decreasing, not increasing, as it had in the past, where we are today is, what makes sense? We would not construct the system we have now if we were to start all over. We wouldn't do it, because it's not efficient. We would probably create a different system, and we're now being asked to do a long-range plan to reimagine the system we have and to think of going forward on it. And I think Emily makes a good point, which is that we are, yes, we are keeping options open, but we're also not addressing a prime need, which is what to do with this building and how to go forward for the kids who are going to be in this building in five or six years. And the one thing that troubles me, and I'm not, one thing that troubles me about the Selectmen's suggestion is, is that, and the Board of Finance's suggestion, is I understand why, but how can you say to people that we're just going to not look at this issue? And maybe we'll have to relook at it a year or two, but what we're doing is, we're looking at a building and a system and something that has prime needs. This building needs major changes. It was built in an era when the construction was not perhaps of the same durability of the construction that the other buildings were built from. But it's 44 years old, and it's, it needs work. And I hate to not address that going down the line. So that's why I'm a little bit troubled. I'm a little bit troubled by trying to rush something to this decision. Normally, I counsel to move quickly and don't wait. But I guess what my problem is, is that we're missing a piece here. And the question is, can we achieve as much flexibility with a system that goes K12 as with a system that goes K5? Can we still achieve most of the flexibility? Because the K12 is a slightly better long-term economic bet in terms of what it saves. And so the question is, is there something there to be had? And that's what I'm a little troubled. And Emily, you sort of brought it back with your comment about not leaving that on the table and not addressing it.
Michelle.
Can we, I know Mark is the only of the Selectmen left, but I just really wanted to ask about, you know, if the financials are virtually the same, with the K12 actually saving more, just a little bit more, why that was taken off the table, and why, why was it the pre-K 5? Was it the initial investment?
Yes.
Yeah.
There was, there was the high cost of the option. It's difficult to get down there, and it would also be difficult to go to the center.
Can I ask just a follow-up question on that?
My end, just a second.
Alan.
I think we have to look at the fact that what we do here to construct a new pre-K 6, 5, sorry, is, the bond is going to go about 22, 23 years. That's a long-term commitment to a new building in the elementary schools. It fixes the big problem, which has always been the elementary schools. The big problem has always been the elementary schools. I'll say it again. The big problem has always been the elementary The big problem has always been the elementary schools. That's our fix at long last. What goes on up here, we can indeed have bonds or bans over time to fix what is required up here. We have been maintaining this building. We have a commitment to this building and down the road a piece, if we find, as the demographics are showing us, that we don't need all this space, there are ways around it indeed to reconfigure that new building. So, it, we don't know what's going to happen in five years or 10 years. All I know is what our trends are now have been verified again and again. And this one, this particular option fixes the elementary school problem for at least 20 some odd years. Of course, we're going to put some money in it over time. Everything needs a repair. Your house does, my house does, but it's the big fix that was required for years and years and years on this board. And the, this, this facility will benefit by more focused repair. So that when we do need $5 million for reconstruction of this or repair of a roof, we can approach that in a singular fashion because the big problem has finally been resolved.
Greg, I just wanted to ask a follow-up question of, of Mark Lion.
Yeah.
Is the, is your Board of Finance concerned about bonding capacity? Because it appears that you would get the biggest share of any cost or any bond that would be floated on any of these options simply because Washington has more children.
I don't know that our Board of Finance has had a discussion adjusting the activity, but I know that when you looked at what the bonding, what the borrowing capacity with the three towns, that long bond, we probably would be concerned as how it would affect the three towns or any other bonding or anything like that.
Right. Okay. So are you, you are concerned then that you're running up a little bit against the possible upward limit?
It has depended.
Oh, okay. All right. I'm sorry, I missed, I missed. The other, the other comment that I wanted to make was just about in terms of this, again, this town issue and thinking that through. I mean, I would really like to see the study that we've asked to be, that we're having continued tonight in terms of the impact on property. But the one interesting thing I would point out is that were you to have one school in the three towns, you're talking about a school sitting in a geographical area that's about 81 square miles. We have towns in the state that are almost that large, you know, and I think in particular of Greenwich, which is about 67 or 68 square miles. I mean, it's within a step of that.
How many elementary schools in the region?
Well, a lot more than one because Greenwich has 61,000 people in it. So there's a difference. When you're, when you're small, you, you may have to live with a larger geographical area and fewer schools because of your population. But I guess the point I'm trying to make is, is that 81 square mile region of three towns, it's not beyond the concept of those towns sharing a school. It's not crazy and it's not out of line because that size of, if it were one town and not the historical accident of three, based on a lot of things from the past, you wouldn't be that far out of the picture. And then the next question is, what's reasonable considering the population size, the demographics, the bonding capacity, the needs going forward? And that's where I think, that's for me where the line has to be drawn, where you have to make a decision over which one of these to put to referendum based on what's a sensible solution. And Alan, I don't agree with you that, that, I mean, you simply, you dismissed all of the educational criteria as being everyone's opinion and there was no data there. In fact, there was a fair amount of data, but I do think opinions intruded because I think everyone came to the table, to be perfectly honest, in, in the group that, that we served on, everyone came to the table with their preconceived notions of how they viewed things. But there were also people who were, who were teachers and professionals at the table who talked about, who gave their, their, you know, positions on things.
Position, could be another word for opinion?
Well, it could be, but on the other hand, I think when someone who is a professional and says that, yes, it works better if you have the school where all the teachers in a given grade are in the same building, they're able, they're able to achieve a greater degree of, of communication, they're able to interact better, they're able to have chance meetings, they're able to do a lot of things. And I think when they say that, I think it carries more weight than when a person who's never taught in a school, like me, in an elementary school, I've never taught in elementary school, I taught in college. But when, when someone's in that position, you know, I, I think it's harder for us to know because we haven't had that same experience with the type of educational things that they have. So that's all I'm saying is, is that it wasn't totally opinion, although opinions, I agree, did intrude, again, because people had positions, they were trying to stake out, positions they wanted to make. Not everyone necessarily listened to what the educational professionals were telling us. So I think that, yeah, there are issues there, but if that's the case and if you are correct that that is so fraught with opinion that it's worthless, then all you're left with is the financial decision. Because that one comes off and then you have to say, what's the best financial decision? And I point out that I don't think anyone is, although the headlights go off when you look at the tuitioning out in terms of the dollar number and the potential savings, it comes with the caveat that Anthony mentioned, which is that the numbers are really soft. And those savings may be illusory and they may not be there. You may be looking at a mirage in that respect because you can't control costs, you don't know what's going to happen with costs. And the one real issue is, you have 200 kids or 100 kids at somebody else's school, you don't know when the year's going to come when they decide to balance their budget on your back by ratcheting up the tuition several thousand a year. You have no control over it and if you negotiate a 50-year contract on education, you know by law, it can be terminated every 12 months. So you have no control over that and that's why that's not such an attractive option for a lot of people. Although it may come to that down the line, if we get small enough, it may no longer be such an economic threat. You may be in the position of Sherman where it's not so bad when you have 30 few kids or so.
Susan.
Well, Greg, I hear your point about 81 square miles and it's not, may not be crazy for us to share a school, but it is certainly scary to set the precedent of being one of two towns in the state to not have a school within your border. There's simply just is not solid evidence to, to determine what would happen in that, in that case. So it is, it's, it is a concern to even consider putting that, consider putting that out. I do think there was a lack of hard data and, and even so much as, as phone calls, you know, for tuitioning out, there was no input from Sherman. There, there were opinions put forward in some of those presentations by volunteers. I respect the effort. I respect the, the time that it took. But in one of them, it was talking about grade blending, two and three and four and five, and, and research has already showed, we have been down that road, research has shown, grade blending does not work, does not work ever since No Child Left Behind. It used to be all the rage, late 80s and early 90s. Pre-K to K would be the only grades that it would make sense to blend, but this board, if I'm not mistaken, changed the entrance level for birthdays to avoid a broad stretch of age range in kindergarten. So to even think of blending pre-K to K would go against the, the concept of, of not having such a broad range. That was put forward. Yeah. So clearly, in my opinion, the options were not properly vetted. I think we could spend an awful lot of time vetting each one and looking at particular research that supports or negates each. I think the quantitative data was lacking. Certainly, there was a whole lot of qualitative data and positions put forward. You know, I respect the input of the selectmen and, you know, if, if it is a speedy, let's get something out to the voters and take a pulse, that certainly, the option 2B certainly accomplishes that. But I am on record saying I am very concerned about what would happen if there were no schools in the state. Simple phone calls, simple phone calls. I'm very concerned about what would happen.
All right. Emily. Dolly.
Once again, shared sacrifice, all three towns. And we have some reports from local real estate agent that main issue is your property tax. And frankly, what the towns can or cannot do to keep your roads paved and your, your water out of your basement, and that's going to be a big issue for these three towns if they have to underwrite and pay for a $70 million project and figure out what to do at their schools and keep their, and/or keep their schools open forever because we, we just can't keep going on. I just want to get back to the motion. For anyone who was concerned, the SLAM initiative, this is quick and dirty, this is not what we're actually going to vote for, but it's the neighborhood of, has projected a cost of $29 million for a new pre-K 12, uh, 6. Keep saying that, 5, sorry. I'm very tired. But because of state grants that are available, the net of that will be somewhere in the $25 million range. And then you add on a fairly substantial amount of money to this school. No one's forgetting this facility of about $23 million. And that should carry this school forward so that we can, can find out more what our future is. But once again, we are fixing the elementary school problem and if we have to close three elementary schools, they are in each town. Shared sacrifice. So if people don't want to move into Roxbury, Bridgewater and Washington because they don't have a local school, then they're not going to move here to any of our towns, any of our towns. Shared sacrifice for the greater good, I do believe.
Is there anyone else? Michael.
I just have to respond to what Ms. Anderson is saying from ATRA about shared sacrifice. That really disturbs me, that term, because it is not an equitable shared sacrifice. If you're talking about two of the three towns not having an elementary school, and let's just look at one of the factors that we're, we're looking at. Someone wants to move into the region and their Realtor says, well, all three towns are lovely towns, but one of the towns has an elementary school, the other two don't. That might be enough to deflate the value of real estate in Roxbury and Bridgewater. I don't see that as being a shared sacrifice. I think that's two of the three towns bearing the brunt of the sacrifice. Granted, Washington is closing their current school and moving it into a, on the edge of their town. That is a sacrifice.
Right.
Particularly if you like having your school downtown in Washington Depot. That is a sacrifice. I acknowledge that. It's not as much of a sacrifice as the other two towns would be making.
And I agree with you. And I know it's heartbreaking.
All right. Alan, I'm sorry. Dolly. Alan, you had your hand up.
Yeah, it just has to do with, once again, the whole nature and the idea perspective. Reiterating that the problem is the elementary school is a financial problem. And the solution is a financial solution. We're not talking about there being any problems educationally in these schools. We're not talking about any problems socially or culturally as far as how they relate to the community. So even though they continuously addressed as a problem, we want to remember that despite our talking about qualitative, qualitative and quantitative things, the only problem that we perceived has been the financial problem. Because even when we talk about fears of educating classes with only seven kids, there have been classes with only seven kids for a long time. The graduating class in the late 40s, early 50s of Burnham, where it was a K-8 school and eight kids in it, and they didn't all go off and drown because they weren't smart enough to close their mouths and they looked up at the rain. So, we've managed to educate people in this area. It's almost as if that scary unknown we're talking about, the future, if our population keeps dwindling, as Greg said, if the high school's down to 200, that horrible future we're all terrified of, is actually a past that we've lived through successfully. So I, I just want to issue, I'm not saying we don't have any problems, I just want to make sure we all always remember that. It is in and of itself the opinion of different people as to what it means when you say the elementary schools are the problem. Even who the speaker is determines what that means.
Greg.
My, my only issue with that, Alan, is it's very tempting to look and see what we did in the past. And yeah, yeah, there was a graduate, there was a graduating class from central school in Roxbury to high school and they graduated five people sometime in the 1930s, I think, or 20s. But the, the point of the fact of the matter is, what was taught back in the eight, in the, in those days, in fact, what was taught probably 10 or 15 years ago and what will be taught to the children in the school that we're trying to decide whether or not to build are, are night and day different and the methods of teaching are different, the entire curriculum is changing. We cannot firmly ground ourselves in the past and say what we did before worked. This is not that world any longer. Those children that emerged from that graduating class in the 40s emerged into a world that was very different from what these kids will face. Those people had a guaranteed, basically a job at a single employer for their whole lives and then they got a pension. That doesn't exist anymore. It's a different world and if we keep trying to say what we did in the past worked and therefore we should continue the futures to what we did in the past, we're likely to wind up in the past, not in the future. And I think that's what we have to consider. And I don't like any of these options, to be perfectly frank. They've all got issues with them. And, you know, all things being equal, it'd be lovely if we could keep schools open and attract people to come to the towns, but we don't control how many people come to the towns. This board has to figure out how to run a proper school system for the children here, how to provide a quality of education, not schools where the, the costs of educating the children is different, where some have air conditioning and some don't, and some have this advantage and some don't. That's not what we're supposed to do. That's not what we're charged with, Dylan. And I think we're, we're charged with running a proper school and that's what we have to decide what to do. We have to pick among several not great options with perhaps not every piece of information we'd like to have. I personally would like to see that study on the, on the property values, but, you know, I think we have to make a decision. We can't continue to do what we've done. It's just not economically realistic. Nor is it educationally realistic in light of the demographic changes because you just, the idea of having these tiny schools with a very few kids in the classroom is not particularly attractive. It's not, I mean, yes, it might be, as Jonathan Costa said, five kids in a class, seven kids in a class, yeah, under certain circumstances, it might be a panacea. Under others, it's a disaster. And I personally don't want to commit the school district to the hope of a panacea when the more, the greater likelihood is, is that it's a major problem, especially if there's gender imbalance with this class of seven. We've already seen small classes at Bridgewater where you've had a major gender imbalance in those classes that has been rectified by moving other kids into the school. And that's the advantage that a consolidated school would give you, is you would be able to render those simply by moving children from one classroom to another as opposed to trying to figure out how you can get some kids from this district to commute to that district. And those are the kind of imbalances that are going to become routine when the schools get that small. And don't forget, the middle high school's in a difficult position too because of the size of it. And what we're trying to figure out is, can we save the ship? Or is it going to go down? And I think the elementary school is one problem, the middle high school is another. So these are not good alternatives. You have to pick the least worst sometimes and, because that's the best you can do.
Sorry. Frank.
For me personally, and you've heard me say it before, for me, it's about the education. I am not a bottom liner. It's not the money. I like seeing this, it gives me a better understanding of what I'm looking at, but it comes down to the education of our students and all of our students are pre-K through 12 and giving them the tools they need to be successful, to give the teachers the tools they need to be successful, to give the administrator, the teachers and the students they need to be successful. I, long-range planning is looking, long-range, looking down the road. Again, I have to say, pre-K through 12, brand-new school that will get us to everything when things change is a much better option, even though Mark Lion just said the other, it's a big chunk and we really didn't like that, but it has the better turnaround 23 years down the road when things happen. It's a difference of $5 million if you're looking with the figures and you... It's a difference of $5 million if you're looking with the figures and you are a bottom liner. That's a good investment in our future. But it's about the education and giving the tools that we need. Again, if Laird's thing had option to C on this motion, I would be right behind it. Supporting to B, that there's just band-aiding things, I cannot support. We've worked too long and hard to move forward to just band-aid again. It's about education and tools, and we have to look forward. And it's not about the towns. We are not Roxbury, we are not Bridgewater, we are not Washington. We are Region 12, and we signed up and got elected as officials, as region members, and we are entities of the state. We have, when we come here, we share as a region, not for our towns. We are here for our children and their education, not for our towns. That's what we're here for. And I feel like I've been beating a drum and stick and sometimes against the brick wall with my head, but we don't understand that. Board of Education, we're here for all the kids. We think regionally, we've got to move regionally, and we have to look long range. Option to C is the best for all of that, educationally, fiscally. It's the most responsible thing that we can put forward. And it might not even happen because of the way our region was set up and what has to happen to towns. But that's the best option to put forward to the voters. It is. I mean, I've been watching this, I've been here, out there, and in here for 12 years listening to this, and it's the best option. And I am not a bottom liner. It's not about the money for me. It's about the education of our children and the future moving forward. And I can't support it as to B, and if we could amend it and make it to C or do whatever, you totally would have my backing on this moving forward to bring it to the community where they can decide if it's what they feel is best for the region also.
Thank you, Fran. Is there anyone else? Alan.
I'd just like to say two things. These are from actual studies in which I can disseminate either through the board or on the website or whatever. These are from the, some of the links that Dr. Costin put out. One is, "Local school officials should be wary of merging smaller, several smaller elementary schools, at least if the goal is improved performance." And Schneider finds that a building's age itself should not be used as an indicator of a facility's impact on student performance, as older buildings can be modernized. So I would just like to say that of all the work that we've done, we've really only done financial work. All of these are unknown to a lot of people besides me at this point, whoever else I give this to. Because the people who are concerned about finances only are not concerned about this wealth of information that's out there.
All right? Anyone else? All right, there's a motion on the floor. Lynn, did you have something in writing?
Yes.
All right, there's a motion on the floor. The motion is that the Region 12 Board of Education shall prepare a report on a proposal to amend the Region 12 regionalization plan as approved by the State Board of Education dated August 16, 1967, including the question to be presented, to be filed with the Commissioner of Education in accordance with Section 10-47(c) of the Connecticut General Statutes. This proposed amendment to the regionalization plan to be contained in this report shall be Region 12 Long-Range Planning Committee Option 2B, which includes the construction of a new pre-K to grade five building on the Chappal campus at 159 South Street, Washington, Connecticut, along with renovations to the existing Chappal Middle High School, and the discontinued use of the Burnham School in Bridgewater, the Booth Free School in Roxbury, and the Washington Primary School in Washington. All those in favor of the motion, raise your hand. Greg, I'm not going to go through this again.
No, I'm not going to go through it again either, but...
This is your chance. All those in favor, raise your hand. Mr. Cobb's hand is not raised. All right. All those opposed, raise your hand. The abstentions, raise your hand. What's the vote?
Five yes, two no, three abstentions.
All right, the motion passes. Thank you. I have eight on our agenda, opportunity for the public to comment on agenda items. Is there anyone who'd like to address this? Yes, ma'am. Come on up, state your name and what town you're from.
The four abstentions. The four abstentions. Greg.
Hold on, hold on.
Just make sure. Susan, Brandon, Greg.
Who abstained?
I abstained.
Greg.
Alan.
And four abstentions.
Four abstentions.
Alan, Greg, Brandon, and Susan.
Right.
So what was the final vote?
Five yes, two no, four abstentions.
All right, the motion passes. All right, ma'am, just state your name and what town you're from, please.
Thank you. Carolyn Dwyer from Bridgewater and co-chair of SOS. Just for all the people in here who may not have lived through this five years ago, it seems very similar, but we were told last time we were bursting at the seams, and that's why we had to consolidate, but now it's because of the enrollment. So I just want to remind everybody just of that contradiction. To me, a long-term strategy is getting students here. Either that or making alliances and get our students out. And we're not doing either. And this isn't going to do that as well. And I really hope that some of the positive things that we've been talking about, you guys will take and really try to do. And, you know, we're all emotional with this. This weekend in Bridgewater, I had a family from Woodbury come up to us at the library and said, oh, how much, you know, I just saw this blue ribbon thing, it looks like you guys are doing really well, and I love that you have small class sizes, can we send our kids here? And my friend said, well, it's $15,000. And she said, oh, that's too bad, because I'd really love to send my kids here. So that's just one more piece as you guys continue to look at the tuition item, lowering that number to get people in here, that is still a viable thing to try to get numbers. We also had another family, and I know we've talked about going to Montessori and doing a better job with Sherman, another family who currently lives in Bridgewater, has two children, they send their kids to Montessori. And again, they heard about all the things that we're doing, and they're actually considering now coming to Burnham. So, you know, we're really talking to people and talking to families and promoting the region. And that is the kind of thing that we feel will change the tide here. What will not change the tide is an incredibly divisive referendum that we're about to undertake. And we heard it tonight, the shared sacrifice and all the other terms that pit one town against each other in keeping Burnham alive, paying $30,000 for them. And I just encourage you to do it quickly. And as Mr. Hirschfeld said, he really doesn't know what the towns think, and I want to know from you when we tell you, what will you do? And I hope, once we tell you, maybe this time we can actually come together and do something creative. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? I'm sorry? Yes, sir, just come out and state your name and what town you're from.
I came, I get up. Ed Wainwright from Bridgewater. Last time we had the meeting, last Monday, the board chairman asked for questions would be sent in, and I sent the question in. And in the question, I basically said that there is a tremendous amount of backup for the cost savings on consolidation. There's, you know, there's this resource 15, goes out 10 years, very detailed, right? There's no backup for the tuition out option. There is a few general assumptions and a conclusion. So my question to you is, are you going to provide the kind of backup for the tuition out that you obviously have drawn a conclusion from? Like, what are the cost figures that you used? Or are you just going to just dump all this question? I didn't get an answer to my email. And I've asked multiple times that some of the local schools be included in the tuition list, and they still don't have Brookfield, and they still don't have, what's the other one? I think Region 15 is there, but Brookfield is not there, and Nanawag, or the other, there's a, and New Milford's not there. There's a whole series of neighborhood schools that are not included in that tuition list. So I'm making a request for the detail, the kind of detail that backs up the tuition out. I hope that's not an unreasonable request, per your standpoint. Is that correct? Is that an unreasonable request?
I don't know. I don't think it is, no. If the detail is available...
I mean, why couldn't we have the same kind of detail that we have on the consolidation?
Yes.
We gave that information to Mr. Stewart the other day when he asked for it. We have the tuitions of all the Dirks. We have New Milford, we have Region 15, we have, well, Sherman you cannot do. My office has called these schools, has called local schools. They will accept us.
They will accept us?
Yes, and that's why you see such, when we look at the information, such a great savings, because we're closing these two schools and we're tuitioning out.
It's nowhere near what it accurately is.
All right, sir, we're not going to get into a debate. You've asked for some information, the ladies tried to answer.
Hey, look, I stood here for two hours and listened to you guys mumble on.
It's our meeting, it's not your meeting.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you. We'll try to meet your request. It's my understanding that you asked for...
I would appreciate that.
It's my understanding that you asked for numerous information from our administration, and they do everything possible to meet your request and...
Well, they don't answer any emails.
Continued to do so. Anyone else?
Mr. Chair, I have the information. If Mr. Wainwright would like it, I can sacrifice this.
That's fine. Anyone else? Yes, sir.
Me?
Yes.
Sure.
Pete Tagley, Washington, Connecticut. I have a couple of requests concerning this issue. One, that you would hold a forum in each town prior to any referendum. I don't know if you were all planning that, but I think it would be good to go into each town. You may not want to, but it's a big issue, needs to be discussed, the board needs to hear from the public. Two, I would like to see a referendum date after September 1st, after the summer, when everybody's here, back to business, back to work, back to school, et cetera, et cetera. Third, I would like you to speak, Jim, and the superintendent. The governor made a misstatement, and I think Ed Wainwright brought it up when we were talking before, that schools with under 1,000 students are not viable. He made that statement. I would presume that the legislature is at least thinking about schools with low populations. I would like to request that you speak, and our superintendent speak, to our state legislature to find out exactly, when we go to referendum on any issue, what's going to go out of it, exactly is the state planning anything in the near future regarding schools, regions, towns with low student population? Because if we go to referendum, pass something, borrow money, and all of a sudden the state passes some sort of legislation, exactly what happens to what we've done. So I think we need to know something about that issue before we go to referendum, is any doubt at the state legislature.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, sir.
I just have a quick question. Marty Tunis, Washington. Is there any data about, like, the current births, like, now in three towns?
Yeah.
You may have already discussed it fairly recently.
We have population projections done by, I forget the fellow.
Dr. Prada.
Dr. Prada, which involves examination of current birth data and projected birth data.
On the website.
And it's on our website.
On the website.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, ma'am.
I'm Crystal Tidrow from Bridgewater. We moved here about three years ago. I have a one-year-old and a two-year-old, so all of these things kind of affect their education. And I just ask that you do look long-term. It's a five-year decision. It's going to mean my kids changing, you know, the way, the schooling that they're used to. I would like it, you know, to at least sustain their full education before a major decision has to be made again. Also, if we are moving forward with 2B, I do suggest, as an architect and planner, to fully analyze this building to determine that it will in fact be comparable in the cost that you currently have to maintain it. Because a lot of colleges that I've planned have, you know, constantly came to the conclusion that demolishing a building nearly is actually cheaper, even upfront than maintaining and, you know, the images. So I just ask, I mean, you've been very thorough so far in all of your analysis and all of your options, so please continue the effort and exhausting all cost options.
Thank you. Ma'am, I would just like to point out, you know, you came up, and I appreciate it, and spoke into the camera, these meetings are televised for anybody who wants to watch them, and you asked us to consider, you're asking the people of these towns, that's what we're asking. We have, the board has made a decision, the people of these towns will decide. It's them, for them to consider. We will present, I'm sure, as much detailed information as we can before any vote is taken, but it's now going to be up to the people of each of these three towns to decide. So, thank you. Appreciate it. Anyone else? All right. Thank you. The next item is executive session for the purpose of the superintendent's evaluation and contract. Is there a motion going to executive session?
With a break.
Hold on, I'm sorry, I have a question.
Since we have taken a vote, which I would have preferred we didn't take tonight, we now have a guy...